Welcome, good morning everyone, to the Waste and Streets Scene Policy Committee. Welcome to people at home, thank you for joining us. First, we have some announcements first of all. This meeting is open to the public, however, appendices one and two to the reported item 10 and appendix one to the reported item 11 are not available to the public or press because they contain exempt information. If members wish to discuss the information in these documents, we will need to ask the members of the public and press to kindly leave for that part of the meeting and we will pause the webcast. The meeting will be webcast and the recording will also be available for people to view later through the council's website. It is also possible that Sheffield Live TV will record and rebroadcast this meeting. We say that every time, it actually happens even when they aren't here, I don't think it does. We have received one petition and one public question from one member of the public. Please can I request that mobile telephones and other such equipment are switched to silent mode so as not to disturb the conduct of the meeting? There is no fire test planned for today. If there is an emergency evacuation, please take instruction from the town hall staff. The assembly point is Tudor Square. And let's have introductions. So I'm councillor Joe Otten, Member for Dornotley and Chair of this committee.
Thank you, Joe. I'm councillor Mark Jones, Deputy Chair of the committee.
Councillor Sean Edmire Richards, councillor for Manor Castle.
I don't think I had the mic on there, did you? Not working. So, have you signed in? Somebody will come over and help you sign in. Over there is councillor Tony Dams, I don't know if we can point the camera. The person who would point the camera at Tony is now helping him to sign in, so. Okay, let's just carry on with introductions. Alexi.
Councillor Alexi Diamond, Green Party councillor for Gledes Valley and Green spokesperson on the Waste and Streets Scene Committee.
Marouf Ralph, councillor for Redding Sharrow.
Councillor Tim Huggins, councillor for Crookston Crosspool.
Councillor Sue Alston, councillor for Fulwood.
Thank you. And officers, Rachel.
Rachel Appleyard, Principal Democratic Services Officer.
Thank you. And Rob down the table that way.
Robert Parkin, Assistant Director for Legal and Legal Advisor to the committee today. Thank you.
Richard Ayer, Director of Streets Scene Regulations Sheffield Council.
Samantha Wood, Licensing and Prosecution Lawyer Sheffield Council.
Thank you. Tony, do you want to have another go at the introduction? Are you logged in now?
Yeah.
The button's not working, the light's not coming on, there we go.
Councillor Tony Dams, Southie Ward, still Southie Ward, no change from the last announcement.
Thank you. And Mike, thanks for joining us, we are just doing introductions, if you would like to introduce yourself.
Thank you, Chair. Apologies for arriving late. I'm Mike Chaplin, I'm also a councillor for Southie Ward.
I quite agree, Sean, that Southie is overrepresented here, I will endeavour to make sure they don't have more waste collections and cleaner streets than everywhere else in the city. Apologies for absence, I believe councillor Gilligan Kubo.
Yeah, just councillor Gilligan Kubo.
With Marouf Ralph substituting here.
Yeah, Marouf Ralph substituting.
Okay, thank you. Exclusion of the press and public, I've already mentioned, there are three closed appendices later in the agenda. Declarations of interest.
Yeah, sorry. I've got personal interest in item eight, the Hackney Carriage fare reviews, as I hold a HCPHE licence.
Thank you for that. Minutes of the previous meeting. Can we agree those as an accurate record?
Yes.
I'll take silence as the assent of the meeting, okay, thank you, that is agreed. Okay, public questions and petitions, sorry, Mark.
Just out of interest, I know, noticed on the last ones that we've got people who didn't attend for questions, and we've said that we're going to send out written responses, so have we sent out the written responses? And to save having to ask those questions next time, is there a chance we could put the written responses in the packs? There was written answers to response 5.1, 5.4 and 5.8. And also, did we get any feedback on 9.4 on the heritage street furniture from Amy?
Just to follow up on the questions with written responses, all the questioners have received written responses and they should be published on the website, on the agenda page. I will double check after the meeting to make sure they're there, but they are on the agenda for the last meeting. The Amy action, I'm not sure, I don't know if officers are able to comment on that one.
Richard, can you?
Thanks, Chair. I'll take that away, Mark, I'm not aware if that's being received or not, but I will chase that off. Cheers, Chair.
Coming back to me, what happened?
Thank you. Thank you, okay, so if we can move on, item five, public questions and petitions, we have one petition from Katie Mammott, are you here? Would you like to come to the table, press the button that turns the mic on, that will be indicated with the red light, and if you want to present your petition? Thank you.
Hello. Oh, good, everyone can hear me, fantastic. Hello councillors, committee members, am I free to just read you my spiel?
Please go ahead.
Absolutely, great. So, as said, my name is Katie Mammott and I'm here today to present my petition for better and brighter street lighting for the Walkley area. I've lived in Walkley for the better part of 32 years and I strongly believe that brighter street lighting would improve night time safety in the area. Currently, the, I assume, far cheaper LED bulbs being used in streetlights are not bright enough for young women and children in particular to feel safe walking down their own street at night. I would appeal to this committee to replace all residential streetlights in Walkley with brighter lights, or add more lights, and not to put concerns about cost above the safety of Walkley residents. There were 31 violent or sexual offences recorded in September 2023 within half a mile of the Essex postcode in which Walkley resides. A study on street lighting by the College of Policing concluded that both violent and property crime was reduced by an average of 21% in areas with improved street lighting compared to areas without. I myself have not felt safe walking home at night in recent years and unfortunately my phone flashlight isn't quite bright enough to quash that fear. Brighter streetlights would help the people of Walkley feel safer, especially as the nights have drawn in and it becomes dark much earlier. Thank you.
Thank you. So I have an official response for you, which I'll read out. In 2012, Sheffield City Council through the Streets Ahead programme embarked on a street lighting initiative which involved replacing over 50,000 street lighting columns and all existing lighting lanterns were also changed for the new, more expensive and more efficient light emitting diode lanterns. Street lighting in the Walkley area, as all areas of Sheffield, was designed to British Standard BS5489 to attain specific lighting outputs to the British standards. Designers made sure the British standards were met and to this they took into consideration lantern power, optic angle, column height/spacings, traffic usage and road speed/width to achieve the correct standard for the road. A walk and build design process package for every road considered the specific lighting column height, position and location, carefully positioning the column and lantern as to avoid obtrusive light into homes, adhering to the Institute of Lighting Professionals ILP guidance on obtrusive lighting which sets out levels for the specific environment. A street lighting design seeks to attain the correct lighting output to the British standards for the road while not wasting energy by overlighting the road. This work achieves a reduction in energy costs and lowers Sheffield City Council's carbon footprint, of which annual targets have to be met through the Streets Ahead contract. Appreciate that despite this, there are some specific roads in Walkley which may be presenting concerns in relation to low levels of lighting or in obtrusive lighting, and if these roads could be forwarded to us, we would be happy to carry out some onsite testing to measure whether these levels are in compliance and can consider what else can be achieved to allay concerns. So that's the official answer. I mean, it's worth adding a couple of things. One is that, thank you for coming and raising this, it's a really important issue, it's something that comes up whenever we have a discussion of street lighting levels and we are currently under a, well, we are currently under a request for a budget saving to reduce light levels further, which has currently stalled due to reasons not unrelated to what you've brought to us, so we're not achieving that budget saving at the moment that we've been asked to achieve. There are, it is also worth adding that the lighting columns that have been installed have a range of levels they can be set to, and in some cases and at some times, they are turned down, they're turned down quite a bit and sometimes they're fairly close to the maximum, so it is possible to vary the lighting levels within the range that the lights are able to display. And therefore, I would emphasise the point in the official answer that says, look, where you have a particularly problem area, do let us know where that is and we'll take a look at it. I'm conscious, certainly in my ward as well, it's also the case that despite the new scheme following all the standards, some places do look very dark and some places look quite nicely lit, so there's clearly a subjective element to it that's not captured by the standard. So, thank you for coming, this is your answer, but do come back to us with more details, I think is the summary. Thank you, thank you.
Thanks. And I will, I will send an email. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, thank you.
Can I also suggest you speak to your local councillor?
Right, we have a question from Andrew Dyson, oh, Andrew Dyson is not attending, is that right? So, okay, so that question relates to a proposal relating to the Hackney Carriage charges that we will discuss later in the meeting, so in a sense the answer will be the result of that discussion. The question, just for the benefit of members, is objecting to the proposal for a station surcharge within the Hackney Carriage scheme of charges. Okay. Okay, item six on the agenda is members' questions, we have had no members' questions. Item seven is the work programme. Rachel.
Thank you, Chair. So the work programme for the committee is on page 31 of the agenda pack, and there's been a few changes since the last meeting. You'll notice there's been a reference from council included, this has gotten to all policy committees relating to investing in renewable energy. There will be a report considered by Strategy and Resources in December, which will then feed down to the committees and what their responsibilities are. On page 35, there's some changes to the work programme that are highlighted and have just spotted a correction, the review of general licensing fees should be March 2024, not 2023, so that's going back in time. Other than that, I'll hand over to officers to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any comments from members or questions on the work programme? Alexi.
Thank you, Chair. The item that we added last time, which was a strategy to reduce plastic waste in Sheffield, I was just wondering if, I think you were due to have a meeting with Sheffield Action on Plastic, are we going to take that forward after that meeting?
So, yes, I have a meeting in my diary with Sheffield Action on Plastic, I think next week, so I will go to that. There's also, obviously, since our last meeting, the government's waste strategy has been published, and so there is a universal service obligation regarding plastics, obviously we need to reconsider the, we need to have a consideration of the overall waste strategy, don't we? I know, Richard, I don't know if you want to speak to this in terms of how we are going to respond beyond the food waste, which we're discussing today, to the overall waste strategy.
Thanks, Chair. Yeah, we're working with officers on that strategy now, as you've mentioned, Chair, we've only just had the data set and some of the, well, not even the final details of the strategy set by central government. Once we've got more information on that, we'll develop our approach and our response to that and then bring back to committee a future date to be set, potentially March or the one straight after the new financial year.
Thanks, Chair. Are you happy with that, Alexi? Okay, thank you. Any other comments on the work programme? Okay, can I take that work programme as agreed? I'll take silence as the assent of the meeting. We are cracking on, aren't we? This is good, quarter past, and we're... So, item eight, Hackney Carriage fares review. If the officers would like to introduce themselves and present the report, thank you.
Craig Harper, Policy Officer in the Licensing Service.
Morning, Daniel Paulette, Licensing Officer. So if it's all right with you, Chair, I'll make a start on the report, so this is the Hackney Carriage fares review. The purpose of the report today is to consider a request from the taxi trade representatives to review the maximum permissible fares for journeys in Hackney Carriage vehicles licensed by Sheffield City Council. So the proposals, the taxi trade representatives have requested a review of the maximum permissible Hackney Carriage fares, there's two separate requests which we've received, one from the STTA and another joint request from GMB, Adco and SETA. The current table of fares was determined by a licensing committee in January 2022, a copy of which can be found in the report at appendix A. In addition to this, an urgent meeting of the Waste and Streets Scene Committee was held in July 2022 to determine a request for a fuel surcharge, which was to be added to all journeys, dependent on the cost of fuel at the time. Details of the surcharge can be found in appendix B of the report. Any agreed change in fares must be advertised publicly for a period of 14 days. If there are no objections to the amendments, the fares come into effect at the end of this period. If objections are received, the committee must consider the objections and set a date for any change to effect no later than two months from the original date of the public notice. So in terms of consultation, as touched upon, there's two separate requests, these are outlined in section 3.3 and 3.4 of the report. In making the request, the requestee is expected to provide information to support their request in accordance with the Hackney Carriage vehicle policy, such as any changes to vehicle running costs, consumer index rate, national living wage, et cetera, since the last review. Such support and evidence for the two separate requests can be found in appendix C of the report. Tables showing comparisons of what each request looks like in terms of cost to the passenger can be found in appendix G. An equality impact assessment has been carried out for this report, found in appendix H. And finally, the recommendations, so we recommend that members consider the requests made by the trade representatives among the Hackney Carriage fares according to the information presented. It is also recommended by officers that members remove the temporary fuel surcharge implemented in 2022 due to the decrease in fuel prices and proposed increase in fares before the committee today. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Comments and questions from members? Surely there must be some. Alexi, Alexi.
Yeah, I think everyone recognises that fees have not increased to match inflation, which has put drivers out of pocket. You know, we've seen the number of Hackney Carriages decrease in Sheffield and we need to ensure the survival of the trade, so I think people in this room are broadly supportive of the proposals put forward. But we also need to try and ensure that any changes not disproportionately and negatively impact disabled passengers who have no choice but to access, to have two-use wheelchair accessible vehicles. And I think from our point of view as well, there shouldn't be any hidden costs, like I did it on at the end of the journey, people might not have enough money to pay at the end if it suddenly bumped up at the end, so I think we need to be very mindful of that. I think our group as well, we wouldn't support an additional station charge or the extra passenger charge, and we would support additions to charge per mile instead, which we have circulated some proposals on that. The other query I'd have is that this decision, it says in the report that has no climate impact, but I think it's clear that whether we have more or less diesel taxis and more taxis generally does have a climate impact, so I would query that, the rationale for that, and I think there should be a climate impact assessment in every report that we get to committee. Thanks.
Thanks. I've got four hands now. Just on the, I mean, some of that obviously was comments, I think, for members, wasn't it? So we'll take it as members, but if officers would like to respond, I think in particular it's the question on climate impact, and clearly there is a climate impact on anything that affects the taxi trade, I don't know if you can help at all.
Yeah, we didn't deem it necessary because it's not a change to the number of vehicles, whether that increases or decreases, it's just a change to the price that people pay to travel in a vehicle, so those vehicles will still be in existence, travelling around Sheffield, whether the fares remain as they are or whether they increase or decrease, so that's why a climate impact assessment wasn't undertaken for this particular report. But I'll take on board councillor Diamond's point and yours as well, Chair, that in future, when we do a fares review and other reports, we will look to undertake a climate impact assessment, so I can only apologise on behalf of officers for that.
If it is the case that it's not making a change, then I'm happy with that, I think it's a question of how the Hackney Carriage fleet, the role it plays in part of the transport strategy is clearly a question with climate implications and we need to think about that in a joined up way, whether or not that means, you know, you can put some numbers in here, you can model something, put some numbers in here. Okay, I'm going to take the rest of the hands, so I've got Tim next.
There are a couple of things I'm slightly unclear about. First of all, the increase for the 2% surcharge on business card payments, I'm not sure how you're going to, how that can be charged for, and do they have to declare this at the beginning or the end of the journey or whatever, I think this is unnecessary and just complicates things, so that's one thing. The other thing is, any impact been done on this £2 surcharge for five to eight, whatever it is, over time, whether that will mean that there will be fewer vehicles that are available for hire, for larger ones, because people will try and fit into smaller vehicles and whether it adverse impacts families, et cetera, who otherwise wouldn't be, so I'm not sure about those.
Do you want to answer the point about the debit card surcharge?
Yes, yes, thank you, Chair. So the business card surcharge, we've sought legal advice on this, and why is legal to charge a surcharge for business cards? You can't charge a surcharge for debit and credit cards for a personal use, so it is something that we have concerns about as officers, about how you find out if it is a business card, do you get told at the beginning of the journey that you're going to get charged extra? And then 2%, you're going to have to rely on the driver actually working that out and charging the correct fare at the end of the journey. So why is legal, it may cause some confusion paying by business cards. And just in terms of the surcharge for the number of passengers, obviously the decision made by this committee was to introduce the re-loading vehicles, which do have a fewer number of seats in them, so I think this proposal was put forward for those vehicles that are probably more expensive and that do have more seats to charge that particular surcharge, and we are aware of some other authorities that do charge a surcharge for passengers, but it's not anything we've ever done in Sheffield in the past that I'm aware of.
Thank you. Mark.
Cheers, Chair. Thank you for this, Craig and Daniel. There are some issues on here that I think we do need to address, and I think because we're looking to come forward with a series of proposals at the end of this, I think it might be helpful to, once we've done all the questions and everything else, to adjourn briefly while we come forward with a standpoint where we can actually come to, because there's obviously conflicting elements here, and without actually having a list of A, B, C, D, E as to whether we're going to approve them or not, it's difficult, so I think we might need to do a slight adjournment just to get our heads together. There is some elements here that are difficult for us to actually understand, in so much that the charging and the price points of everything that we do with the taxis will invariably have an impact on the taxi trade and how it functions. We still don't see the taxi trade as an integral part of public service and of public transport, and I think we do need to change that footing to give it a greater relevance, because for climate change elements, we want to see differentiation of journeys, where you're doing shorter journeys, if you can do it by active means, walking, whatever, you should. However, there's going to be the elements where buses aren't available and you've got longer distances to go, where taxis then become absolutely an integral part of our journeys, so I think as we go forward, some of that element should be reflected in our considerations. One thing that I do understand from our discussions that we've had as a committee is that we don't understand exactly the number of journeys that are taken by our taxi trade and we don't understand the nature and the distances of those journeys. I know this might be a bit onerous, but can we explore those elements going forward so we get a better understanding of what the taxi trade looks like in terms of the impact on the drivers? We hear anecdotally that taxi drivers will decline longer journeys, which doesn't necessarily help when you're looking for those journey differentiations because of the pricing structures, and maybe we need to reflect on that and maybe put greater emphasis on the mileage rather than on other elements. As Alexi alluded to earlier, councillor Diamond, sorry, being informal here, Alexi, I hope you don't mind, we want a charging service that is transparent to the public because we don't want conflict between passengers and drivers where you get to the end and all of a sudden you get surcharges added on, which is unclear, because our drivers need to be given protection, as do our customers, and we're here to reflect the public's views on this. The other elements around increased surcharges to the station and such, I'm not sure we've got enough evidence to say what we can and can't do on that, because we don't know what the cost to the drivers is operating out of the stations. So I think as an ongoing process, we will be reviewing these, so I think for today it would be good to kind of get some small baby steps on a new charging regime that works both for the public and the trade itself, because we do need it to be sustainable, it is part of public transport, but we're quite happy to kind of have that ongoing evolution and a strategy for what we want the taxi trade to be delivering. The element about having larger cabs, for me, the five to eight makes sense, because if there's eight of you and you've got one of the new re-loading taxis, you're going to have to get two taxis, so having a bigger taxi that allows everyone to pile into it, if that's the appropriate phrase or terminology here, probably not the best image, that doesn't seem unreasonable. But also, the larger cabs, the larger vehicles will be able to accommodate more successfully, potentially larger wheelchairs and a number of people to travel with them, so where they've got someone to help them move around because of disability, absence of mobility, and then they've got family members with them, we will need to make sure that the viability of larger vehicles within our fleet is maintained. We know the re-loaders are relatively cheap price point wise to acquire, so a lot of our drivers are migrating towards that, so we understand that, we understand the cost to drivers, but also the increase in the surcharge for cleaning up after accidents in vehicles. As more and more vehicles are getting carpets in, it does become obviously more expensive and takes longer to clean them, so I think that is an element that we need to support and look at going forward. There's obviously a lot of things there, so that's why we're hoping we can have an adjournment to come forward with a committee as a group of proposals that are easy, because otherwise voting on them is going to be really, really difficult to actually move this forward and move on the agenda for next year. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Yeah, I appreciate, it's probably a difficult debate to follow for people without all the papers in front of them, there's so many individual proposals here. I'm happy to have an adjournment if that's what members would like to do, but let me go to the last name on my list first and then we'll think about way forward, so Marouf.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I mean, I think I agree with Mark for once that the taxi trade is an integral part of the transport offering in Sheffield, especially the hack and trade. However, I do have some concerns, especially around the proposals that have been raised, especially, I mean, one is 2% for business cards, I think, Craig, you've already alluded to that, how will a driver tell the difference between a business card and a personal card? And if a customer's being charged 2% on a business card, then why would they not just pay by their personal card? The point around £2 extra for large vehicles, I feel like that's a bit of a moot point currently, because I can't tell whether there's any difference between carrying one passenger or whether there's any difference between carrying six or more passengers. Maybe you can tell me better, Craig, do we have any vehicles in Sheffield that allow more than six passengers or not? And... And the point about the fuel surcharge, I'm just looking on page 87 of the report and I do notice that fuel has been declining from October 2022 until July and now it's started rising again. And the current average price for fuel, for diesel at the pump is £1.62. So is there a risk that the trade will be back here in a few months' time as fuel prices continue rising, should we remove the surcharge that there is currently on there?
Thank you. So I've got another, sorry, is there anything you want to come back to on those points? Particularly the size of vehicles, I think was the question, wasn't it?
Yeah, I don't know for certain if we've got any Hackneys that carry more than six passengers. I think the average is kind of six passengers for these larger vehicles. We don't allow the use of the front kind of passenger area. That's something that's been decided in Sheffield. And just to probably touch on the fuel surcharge, I think we're recommending that removal because an increase in fares should compensate or offset any fuel surcharges. And we've had a few complaints in the past about people not realising they were being charged extra due to the fuel surcharge. So looking to compensate that under an increase in the fares that drivers can charge. Sorry, Chair, just to touch on a point that I think councillor Jones made about the cost of a station permit. I know we've got a licensee here, maybe you'll correct me, but we seem to think it's around £710 annually for the cost of a station permit. £712, Chair.
Thanks. Sue.
Thank you. I think you've probably just half answered my question, but I was really just trying to find out what this station surcharge was designed to cover and I've obviously just missed it. And is it charged on people picking, collecting a taxi at the station or people being dropped at the station or both?
So yeah, so it's £712, as we just alluded to, and it should, I'm not 100% certain, but I think the request is to, for those people who have a permit. So if you haven't got a permit to rank at the station, you drop off, you won't be charging people that surcharge. It's just the people who choose to rank and collect passengers from the station.
Yeah, sorry, just to clarify the station surcharge here. Yeah, I think it's £20 currently what's being requested. Forty, apologies. Is every driver, every Hackney driver currently in Sheffield allowed to pick up from the station? And if they're not, is there a risk that we then have a two-tier system that those who are paying the station permit are allowed to charge this £40 extra whereas those who aren't are not allowed? So that doesn't really seem to be very fair in my eyes.
I must say, I read it as a proposal to add £40 on fares that are picked up from the station and that was the proposal. But if it's not clearly that, then we need to be clear. Having said that, I'm not sure the committee's minded to accept it anyway, so we don't possibly need to go into great detail on it. Mark, do you want to come on this? Oh, yeah, Craig, I don't know if you can help on this.
I can try my best, not being a driver. But so any vehicle can pick up from the train station, you don't need a permit. It's to rank at the station to collect fares is my understanding. So a private hire vehicle, for example, can go and pick up a passenger up from the station. A Hackney carriage that works for an operator, again, can pick a passenger up even if they don't have a permit. That's my understanding. I'm happy to be corrected if that's correct.
Right, so and the rank being that the bit where everybody queues and the taxis file past single file one by one, taking ages and ages, unlike in the old days when we had a big space. Okay, okay, I think that's clear. Well, I think it's clear enough, given that I don't think that members are wanting to support that £40 anyway, if that's correct. So I think before we consider the adjournment, I think we need to be, I want to recap the issues that we have discussed. So the extra £2 for carrying five plus passengers, I think there's some disagreement on that. So I think we need to have a discussion. I think we need to have it in an open meeting, not in an adjournment. So that's to discuss. The surcharge on business card payments, I don't think anybody wishes to support. Is that correct? So again, we don't need to discuss that. The railway surcharge, I don't think members wish to support, so I think that's clear. So what else is there? Okay, so I think what, I think what we're looking at, I think if I speak for members and correct me if I'm wrong, we're looking at something based on the proposal from the STTA, which is initial tariffs of £3.30, £3.50 and £4.50 depending on the time and drops every 176 yards, that's 10 drops a mile, so that's £2 a mile for your distance. And they are asking for also £1.20 for hirings on a bank holiday up from £1, £80 for fowling up from £50 and this £2 for carrying five or more passengers, which we need to discuss. So is that a fair summary, I think, of what the position of the meeting is? The item I think, the item I think we've got a disagreement on is the extra £2, Alexi.
Thank you, Chair. We have circulated a slightly different fare calculation that everyone should have seen, based on no average increase for the first, well, on picking up, sorry, for the first mile and then slightly different increases thereafter, which everyone should have seen.
Yes, so I have that in front of me, yes, on the next page in front of me. So as Sean has indicated, okay, let me just summarise that to start with. You're proposing that we take an amount off the initial fares and recover that over the next five miles effectively, I think is what you're saying. So you get £20 off the initial fare and recovering that over five miles. So I think, I mean, this is something that Mark alluded to as well. And I think it's a, I think it's a good idea in principle. I'm just slightly nervous about doing this much surgery on the numbers in front of us without going back to the drivers and getting information on average length of journey and that sort of thing. Mark, yes?
I think, though I think there's some consensus about looking at how we charge over the distance, I would disagree on the first mile bit because if you're having a lower fare for travelling the first mile, you encourage people to do short journeys. We want to be getting out of encouraging people to use taxi vehicles to do short journeys. So in that element, I kind of, I struggle with that element. I understand where you're coming from, but for me, it's about not encouraging unnecessary. We don't want people to be travelling for half a mile in a car at the end of the day because that's not good.
And so, yeah, we want to have a public transport offer, an active travel offer that enables people not to have to use, you know, motor cars where they want to. However, people that are still going to need to go for short distances and the people that are largely going to do that are maybe people that need a wheelchair accessible vehicle or another disability that means that they can't use another form of transport, which is why we want to protect those people and also, yeah.
Thanks, Alexi. I mean, I kind of agree with Alexi on this one. I think it's also worth saying that because of the way the fare is front-loaded, it's even with a proposal like this, it's still highly cost inefficient to get a Hackney carriage for a short distance and rebalancing it, even after it's rebalanced, it would be still cost inefficient. I would like to, I was going to say, if I had to pull a number out of the air for a proposal like Alexi's, I would go a lot further. I would want to take like a pound off the initial fare and recover that over the distance. But I think in order to do that, I would like to have a conversation with the trade on that, just to be clear, that we're getting the sums right. So I'm not minded to support the kind of the complicated bits of your proposal this time. I'm also conscious that the whole concept of drops every number of yards is a little bit opaque to a lot of people. That if we say we are moving from a system of a £20 drop nine times a mile to one every, 10 times a mile, so it's £1.80 a mile to £2 a mile, that's clear. And if we start, you know, if you go to 9.2 drops a mile or 10.2 drops a mile, then that's, you know, suddenly you're getting your calculations out again, aren't you? So I am slightly nervous about that. I think it's a good principle. I think it should be done in slightly, with more ambition and probably not done today. That would be my view. Mark?
Sorry, Chair. In your summation, I don't mind having the debate in an open session, so that's fine. But in your summation, you missed out the element of the two different proposals between GMV and STTA as to the hourly charge effectively for waiting. There's two different price points there. So for us, I think we're agnostic as to whether we go for the higher or the lower rate. Go for the higher rate in all fairness, but I'm not sure what everyone else feels. Because £18, I think it was £18 to sit in a taxi outside someone's house for an hour in your car freezing, doesn't feel necessarily unreasonable, but there's not much difference between the two. So if you're just having a short period of waiting for a minute while the passenger gets in or out, we're not too mired about that one. But do we need to go for the £18 fee or the £16 fee is definitely a question we'll need to address here.
No, no, so thank you for that. So the items, I think we still have reached, we haven't reached remit at all. The waiting rate, as you suggest, there's also the question of whether the clocks change at 6am or 7am. There's been, there's the difference between the two proposals. And then there's the £2, then there's the Green's proposal on the surcharge. Now, I'm happy to adjourn to have a kind of discussion on the procedure of how we do this. But if people are just going to discuss the merits of the things, I think we need to do that in an open session. I think that's, I think I was about to get that advice from over here quite correctly. So let's have the discussion on the merits of these things and then we'll see if we need to reach and take an adjournment. Sean, do you want to come in there?
Yes, I just wanted to ask, which I think is a bit procedural. It was just that Alexi's proposals, because they were sent so late last night, meant that we only got, you know, for old ladies who go to bed early, it meant that we only got to see them today and also didn't really have much time to think about them. And like you say, there are things that we might want to ask officers further about, or indeed the taxi trade. So it's a thank you, but in future, can we say that people who are going to send something as technically complicated as this, are going to send them in good time, both for the public guilty so that they can be published and also so that we have time to sort them out? I mean, it's a very interesting email you've sent us, but we needed a bit more time is what I'm asking. That in future, for something as complex as this, as opposed to taking an eye off something. My other question is, I just want to ask again, because I know that councillor Ruff has indicated a personal interest and I'm not clear if we're agreeing charges and things, whether there is actually a pecuniary interest. And I just want everybody to be transparent and for councillor Ruff, if necessary, to be protected about what we're proposing today because he's declared having a licence, which I assume he occasionally uses.
Rob, do you want to?
Yeah, just on two points. So the first point about the admissibility of the proposed amendment. It is admissible as a proposed amendment technically, however, it may be that members reflecting on whether they have sufficient information to make a decision in support of the change, subject to any just presentation or responses of officers on the point. Secondly, councillor Ralph and I had a thorough discussion about the nature of his interest and I'm satisfied as a monitoring officer that it's not a DPI and he can participate because the rules allow that if members of the public can speak, so can he. And I think we discussed his predetermination or otherwise, and he's comfortable, he's not predetermined on the points either. So yes, that's the advice given and I'm satisfied that it's correct. Thank you.
Just on that one, splitting hairs, members of the public can speak, but members of the public can't vote on this. Is there an issue? Because ideally, as a committee member, you should be able to vote on these proposals, but I just want to make sure that there's no conflict.
Very, very good point. The constitution simply provides that where they can speak, then you can speak as well. And the wider rule is about just participate. It allows essentially that he can participate fully. The point there is that he's not predetermined. Following the discussion that we had, he's comfortable with that personal reflection. So yes, he can participate. It's not a DPI which would exclude him. So, yeah.
I mean, I think the point that members and probably members of the public are concerned on is that whether there is a pecuniary nature to the interest, whether there is money going to be earned of a different amount as a result of a decision that's made in front of us. And I'm sure councillor Ralph would not want to participate if that was the case. But did you get an assurance on that grounds as well? Because as Sean had said, you know, it looks like we have a member of the trade voting on the rates.
So councillor Ralph, so we discussed it. It's not listed as a DPI and that's on the basis that councillor Ralph told me that he doesn't operate with the, whilst he holds the licences, he doesn't actually operate as a, so that means that it's not a DPI in this instance.
Marouf, do you want to clarify?
Yeah, sure. I can confirm I do not, even though I hold a current licence, I do not operate as a Hackney carriage proprietor.
Okay, okay. I think, well, it's not for us to dispute that. No, okay. All right, okay, so I've written on my list of issues also the fuel duty surcharge because I think the recommendation is to remove that, but the current rate it applies at is at £20. So we could say, let's remove it, but put that £20 on the initial fare, I think would be a reasonable course of action. I know the trade like this keep it and are concerned about fuel price changes. They do seem to be fairly stable compared to when we brought it in. And when I Googled it, they said, yeah, it's above £1.60, but it's likely more likely to go down than up. So I think they should be happy with, I think £20, to convert that to £20, just to simplify the tariff and create fewer surprises for the travelling public, I think is a reasonable step. Are members happy with that view of the fuel duty surcharge to get rid of it, but put £20 on? Okay, so I'll cross that off my list of issues. The 6am, are there any kind of strong feelings on Saturday at 6am rather than 7am from members? I appreciate that we've had two submissions from different parts of the trade, one wanting to change and the other not mentioning this. Mark?
And as we've only effectively got the three tariffs for 7am and 7pm and then bank holidays, I think I am cautious about doing policy on the hoof because policy on the hoof can often be incorrect. So I'm kind of inclined to stay as it is now, but when we look to review this, see what the implications are for the trade and journey times. I know that other cities have multiple tariffs, simpler tariffs are easier for the public to understand, I get that. Where the cutoff is, I think we just need to review to understand what it's going to mean for different drivers operating at different times. Because I'm mindful that if you're going to the station to do a long train journey, you probably get there before seven, so you miss that 6am bit. But when you come back, you're probably getting back after six, so you then fall into that next tariff element. So I'm not sure as to what this will really do in terms of swings and roundabouts on terms of affecting the travelling public going, and certainly going to and from the station where a lot of people will be using it. And actually, the only other thing I did think is for next year, having effectively been dad taxi for partners going to Manchester Airport, I'm mindful that we can't drive charged, our drivers can't charge for dropping people off at Manchester Airport, despite the fact that even the drop off you get charged for now. So drivers taking passengers through airports are potentially getting costs that they can't pass on to their customer. And I'm not sure how that's going to affect people driving and getting to the airports and such like. Not that we want to encourage people to fly, but they do. And there's other elements in there that I think we should look at in terms of using cards. I agree that we shouldn't be charging a surcharge for business cards because you can't necessarily say what's a business card and what's not. But drivers are having to absorb the cost for taking card payments and I'm not sure that's necessarily reflected within the price points here today. So again, for next year's review, I think that's what we would like to see explored because I don't want drivers being squeezed at the margins and making the trade less viable. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. I mean, my understanding is that, you know, a Hackney carriage can decline a fare that goes outside of the city. So they don't have state of Manchester airport. I don't know how many people would actually take a Hackney carriage to Manchester Airport from Sheffield. It's far more likely to be a private hire vehicle, in which case, you know, they're not fares that we regulate. But your points are well made. I think we disposed of the debit card surcharge. We didn't, I think we all agreed, we didn't want to do that. The 6am thing is part of the Green proposal, so I don't know if you just wanted to speak to that and perhaps that we could vote on that separately and then move on to the other items. and then move on to the other items.
Yes. So I'm the councillor for Netheredge and Sharrow. We have a lot of taxi drivers in Netheredge and Sharrow. And from my discussions with taxi drivers in Netheredge and Sharrow, it's something that they feel would actually benefit them quite greatly, because a lot of them, their shifts are based on that six to six sort of timeframe. So that's why it's in our amended proposal.
Thanks. So just to be clear, the six AM, six PM thing wasn't, it wasn't on the hoof, it was one of the submissions from one of the bodies. It was the ADCU, GMB and etc proposal was to change all the sevens to sixes. So six AM, six, seven AM becomes six AM, seven PM becomes six PM. Like I say, I don't have a strong feeling on this. I'm minded to abstain on this, but I don't know if I suggest we put this point to a vote now and then dispose of it and then move on to the other points. Is that a reasonable process? Because it does seem to be an atomic, atomic element. So can I see all those in favour of the switching to six and six, six AM, six PM? And against? The State's Grove. Okay, review next year, abstentions. Okay. Sorry, I'm going to have to count that because there was two in favour. Can I see those in favour of the switch again? Two. And against? Three. Yeah, three, but you do have to put your hands up. Okay. And abstentions, well, that was, and two and possibly two other abstentions. Okay, well, that falls, so we stay at seven and seven. Okay. The waiting time proposal, I mean, the waiting time is, comes with a, it comes with the other, I mean, it's part of the tariff, isn't it? So it's Shall we deal with the Greens' proposals on the on the drops next? Because I think that's probably the more complicated thing. So again, it's, we've debated it. I think we've all expressed our views. I don't think we need to debate it any further. Can I see all those in favour of the Greens' proposal, the drops, which is basically to take a twenty p off the initial tariff and spread it over, spread that out over the following five miles. Is that a fair summary of what the proposal is here? Yeah, okay. Can I see those in favour of that? And against? Yeah, yeah. And abstentions. Okay. So that falls as well. But I think the point is well made. I think we would like to look at that and we would like information from the trade. I think what we need is some indication of your average journey length so that that kind of adjustment can be done in a fair way. That's kind of what we need to know. Okay, so that's dealt with. So I think the outstanding issues are the waiting time and the two pounds for carrying five to eight passengers. Again, okay, let's go to the two pounds for carrying five to eight. I'm conscious that we had a representation from Mr Martin of the Disability Sheffield, saying that he is concerned about not this proposal, but something similar to it, resulting in higher charges for wheelchairs. And I think he was correct to raise that, but I don't think that's what this proposal does. It doesn't say you pay more for a larger vehicle or you pay more for a vehicle that can carry a wheelchair. All Hackney carriages can carry wheelchairs. But I do think it is useful that we have a diversity of vehicles in the fleet, that we don't move entirely over to reloading vehicles because some wheelchair users actually do prefer the side loading vehicles for, because everybody's disability is slightly different. And so I think having something whereby the larger vehicles can charge a bit more for carrying a larger number of passengers just gives them something to create that, create some benefit to the driver for having a more expensive vehicle and a benefit to the passenger for if they have a large group of people having access to a vehicle and carry them and not needing to take two taxis. So I think there's a benefit all round for this extra two pound charge. So I'm inclined to support it. There any final comments on that? Or shall I put that to the vote? Okay. So, yeah, Alexi?
So just to clarify on that, currently Hackney carriages, they have a maximum of six passengers anyway. So you're just putting it up for like five to six passengers, basically. That's what you're adding to.
Yeah, only if you're actually carrying five or six passengers, yes. Yeah, yeah, yeah. So yeah, if five people get into the taxi, then the driver presses the button and it adds two pounds on. That's proposed. Are you content with that? Still voting, okay. But, okay, okay. So can I see those in favour of? Was it, sorry?
Sorry, Chair, just to confirm, I think you're saying five to six, but I think it should still stand at five to eight, just for clarity's sake. Because you can purchase Hackneys that do carry up to eight passengers. It's just, I don't think we have any in Sheffield at present time. So I didn't want to eliminate.
Thank you. Yes, yes. Thank you. That's, thank you for that correction. Yes. So the proposal for the extra two, well, Alexi?
I just want one more clarification. Would this surcharge be added at the beginning of the journey or the end of the journey? Because that's quite important.
I don't know the answer. I assume you could, charges could be put on at the beginning, at the end of the journey.
Well, if we can decide it should be added at the beginning, that would be preferable, Tim.
So a couple with three small children are going to be paying two more, two extra than four full size adults. I mean, I can't, I can't see how that can be a reasonable tax on families at a certain level.
I think if we're not, unless we're going to start weighing the children. I mean, children of whatever size are people too and, you know. No, I, yeah, yeah. I think it's a fair point that that might seem an anomaly. I think wherever you draw the line, there are going to be, there are going to be issues like that. Can we, can we put that to the vote on the extra two pounds for carrying five to eight passengers, whatever age and size? All those in favour? Yeah, okay. And against? And abstentions. Okay, that's carried. Okay.
Can I just clarify that that would be, they would be informed at the beginning of?
Yes, can we specify that is to be added at the beginning of the journey? Is that something we can specify in the tariff?
Don't want it to be a nasty surprise, do you?
Yeah, I've just had a nod from the trade representative, be added at the beginning of the journey.
Beginning of the journey, okay.
And we can make that reference in the affairs chart if necessary.
Yeah, yeah, at the beginning. Okay. Thank you for that. Okay. So the, we have, we're only left now with the, well, if we agree where we've not already specified a decision, the STTA proposal, which I think is, I think is where we're going, so that's that is minus the business card payment, but everything else is basically the STTA proposal. So that includes, we've not discussed, but I don't know, nobody's raised, the fouling charge of eighty pounds, the hiring charge of one pound twenty on a bank holiday, and the yardage rate. So it's a drop every, a drop of twenty pence every hundred and seventy-six yards. So two pounds a mile up to ten miles. So I'm converting units in my head and reading this out so that it's not comprehensible. People actually prefer seventeen thousand, six hundred yards and then one hundred and fifty-nine yards thereafter. Those proposals, are we happy to go with those as the basis of decision? I think we are. And then that only leaves the waiting time for us to settle. Okay, I think, I'll take that as, we've agreed that's the basis. So the waiting time, the STTA proposal is sixteen pounds an hour. The GMB etc proposal is eighteen pounds an hour waiting time. Now, I could say, I was, my thinking was that I was basing my views on the STTA proposal, which is a higher mileage, higher per mile rate. And therefore, that was the package. I think if we went to the eighteen pounds an hour, we'd be picking the higher elements out of each proposal, which I think is comes out of a higher quantum than anybody has asked for, which would be a slightly odd thing to do. So on that basis, I am minded to go for the sixteen pounds an hour waiting time. I don't know if members have a different view. Yeah, if, I'll take silence as a cent on that. Okay. Well, in that case, I think we have covered all the, all the elements of the tariff, unless somebody can point out something I've missed. Gratitude to members and officers for staying with us, because it's been quite complex. But let's do it again. Yeah, thank you. Yeah, thank you, Sean. So I don't know if this can be confirmed, but my understanding therefore is that we have gone with the STTA tariff minus the debit card, minus the fuel duty surcharge, plus twenty p instead of the fuel duty surcharge, which goes on the initial tariffs. And and that's it, I think.
Sorry.
So the cleaning, the fouling charges from the STTA submission. Maru?
Yeah, sorry, Chair. Just want to clarify, that last bit you said an additional twenty p. Was that the twenty p at the start you were talking about?
Yes, it is just a twenty p at the start, replacing the fuel duty surcharge, which is currently twenty p at the start. Yeah. Yeah. But I think the fuel duty surcharge is an extra that's added on, whereas this would be within the base tariff. So just to improve the transparency of the whole thing. Are members happy with all of that? Can we agree that as the decision of the meeting? I'll take silence as dissent of the meeting. Okay.
And although I'm loath to say this, well done, Joe.
Well, from a former Lord Mayor who chaired many difficult, many difficult full council meetings, I'll take that. Thank you, thank you. Right. Are you happy, Rob, that we've agreed, we've made a complete and legal decision at that point and we can move on to the next item? Excellent. Right. Phew. Okay, let me find where we are in the papers. So the next item is the review of the Crystal Peaks Market Service Charge. Who's presenting this? Oh, Liam, sorry. Right, okay. Liam, thank you. If you want to come to the table and introduce yourselves.
Morning, everybody. It's Liam Pond, interim operations manager for City Centre Maintenance and Sheffield Markets.
Ben Browsford, head of street seeing services.
Thank you. Would you like to introduce the proposal? And I'm conscious there's a lot of information here, so obviously we don't need it all reading out, but members will have read it, I'm sure. But if you wanted to introduce the proposal, thank you.
So the purpose of the report is the review of the Crystal Peaks Market Service Charge. This paper sets out a proposal to review the service charge recharged to traders of Crystal Peaks Marketplace. The council are tenants of Crystal Peaks Markets, where a superior lease is provided by the council's landlord and could recover a service charge from the council for certain services that the provision of, is managed by the landlord's agent, which is workman LLP. Although the underlease made by the council with the market traders allows for this service charge to be recovered by the council, this has not seen an increase passed on to traders in several years. This is despite the operational costs of the market increasing substantially. This report therefore sets out the impact of the under recovery and proposes options in relation to the service charges going forward. The recommendations for this report is that the Wasting Street Committee approve and increase the service charge currently charged to market traders to close the gap to eventual full cost recovery. Agree a period of twelve weeks from the decision being taken today to the implementation of the new service charge and agree that a review should take place annually for officers to make proposals to the committee for moving towards full cost recovery, or if necessary, proposals will be brought to reduce the service charge. Market traders pay three separate charges in Crystal Peak Markets. There is a rent for the market stall, a utility charge and the service charge that is designed to recover the costs of providing the general services of the markets used by all, which include iron, such as market staffing costs, cleansing, et cetera. The service charge is devised from the cost incurred by the landlord for running and maintaining shared parts of the building or estate, which legally the landlord could charge back to tenants. This report only deals with the costs for the service charge. However, there is an intention that we will bring a future report to committee, which will outline the rent position and review the impacts of the recent committee decision to increase the utility charges by fifty percent. As part of various support measures agreed by cabinet members to help market traders through challenging economic times such as COVID-19 pandemic, the service charge hasn't increased since 2009, where it last saw a three percent increase. The market traders are categorised on their solvents four key areas, non-food, food, cafes and meat and fish. A report was brought to a previous Wasting Street Committee meeting in June, which resulted in members deferring the decision requesting the officers revise figures to firm up of a service charge increase. The purpose of this report is to outline the financial implications that the under recovery of the service charge from the council tenants created and provide some options on addressing the unsustainable situation. So on actual costs and recovery, in total, in financial year 2022, 23, operational costs attributable to the market service charge at Crystal Peaks was seven hundred and sixteen thousand. The amount recharged to traders were four hundred and fifty-three thousand, showing an overall subsidy deficit of two hundred and sixty-three thousand. The recovery rate for the financial year 2022, 23 was approximately sixty-three point two point, two four percent of the actual cost. Mitigation on this, several structural and operational changes over recent years have meant that the market team is running as lean and efficiently as possible. It is only through increased tenancies, take up and reduction in external charges that the service charge could be reduced. Current occupancy figures at Crystal Peak Markets are seventy-nine percent. Despite expert occupancy figures appearing quite low at seventy-nine percent, national average for market occupancy stands at seventy-two percent, which indicates the market is performing better on occupancy when compared to the UK average. Changes to the service charge will not be implemented immediately. There will be a period of twelve weeks between any decision to the change in the charge and the charge being implemented. This gives the tenants a reasonable grace period to prepare for any increases. There are no proposals to back the any historic under recovery on charges. Proposed options for the service charge increase, there's a table that sets out nine options for members. On scenario one, which is the state of score to do nothing, this is not seen as a viable option, although the team will actively manage costs as far as possible. There will inevitably be an increase in cost due to inflation resulting in an overspend position for the council to fund. In effect, this will increase the subsidy Sheffield City Council is giving to the market traders. Scenarios two through eight, these proposals increase current service charge by varying degrees. This still leaves Sheffield City Council subsidising market traders, that means there continues to be an overspend that the council needs to fund. However, it must be acknowledged that the greater the increase to price, there is potential for the occupancy levels to drop as traders may struggle to absorb the additional price increase. And then finally, scenario nine, which is a full recovery option. Whilst this is a significant increase and will result in a reduction to the occupancy level, as traders will struggle to absorb this increase without increasing their own prices, it is based on recovering all the costs that the council incurs and therefore does not provide a subsidy to the market traders. The recommendation is, in the proposal, is scenario eight, which will increase the current service charge to the midpoint between the current charge and the full cost recovery. And that's based on a hundred percent occupancy. As far as consultation goes, market management has consulted with the traders individually to make them aware that a committee report has been submitted regarding the service charge. We've also contacted them through the EUG of email to make them aware. And recently, a meeting took place between traders, members of the committee and local councillors and council officers where the service charge increase was discussed. On the quality's implications, this would be the first increase to the service charge in fourteen years, therefore the impact may be more significant. The recommended increase to the midpoint between the current charge and the actual cost would see a competitive service charge when compared to other retail outlets. And there will still be an ongoing loss to the council for the under recovery. Discussions have highlighted that some of the traders believe they may struggle with the service charge increase as mitigations the council is proposing. A, not immediately pursue full cost recovery. B, give a reasonable period before implementing the new service charges. And C, stagger any future increases towards full cost recovery over a number of years. It is highly likely that the increase in cost will be passed on to customers in many cases. The assessment identifies specific impacts in relation to the quality categories of age, cohesion, health, poverty, financial inclusion on all small traders. The desired outcome is to make the market's budget more sustainable while minimising the risk to traders of becoming unprofitable and to minimise the impacts on costs being passed on through customers. The proposed increase is likely to compound other cost increases, for example wholesale prices that traders seem to have been experiencing. The cost will continue to increase in line with inflation and the cost of living crisis. From a financial implications point of view, the market service continues to face significant financial challenges and inflationary pressures which will increase the subsidy to the council given to the market traders if full cost recovery is not adopted. If full cost recovery is not adopted, the market service in relation to Crystal Peaks could face an unsustainable financial position, the longer subsidy is granted. The proposal to adopt scenario eight will initially recover from traders £585,000 and the cost remain at £716,000, leaving the council effectively subsidising £130,000. This scenario, however, will only take two financial years to reach full cost recovery if we keep increasing in line with that scenario. The market service has sought legal advice from our legal team regarding the implications of providing a subsidy and whether this falls within the government's subsidy control regulations. We did have a response by, and the proposed grants do not appear to fall within the definition of subsidy control. However, given the low value of the grants, no subsidy control act principles assessment is required to be undertaken. Alternative options considered, the option to do nothing has been rejected by officers due to the unsustainable nature of increasing subsidy required on operational costs. The option to move straight to full cost recovery, we believe would be too much of an impact to the tenants, it's likely to create significant cost pressures that are too large to pass straight on to customers and may increase the market's vacancy rate, which will negatively financially impact the budgets for service charges and rents. Other models of recharging the service charge such as service charge on tenancy agreements are options that require further work but have not been possible to complete in time for this paper. Therefore, the proposal is scenario eight, increasing the service charge to the midpoint on the deficit between the current charge and the actual cost. The principle of full cost recovery of service charge while allowing for some subsidy to support tenants to adjust to the increases, which will allow them to better manage costs and charges required to offset the impacts on their businesses. This will reduce the potential of businesses needing to leave the market, which in turn which in turn reduce financial risk from loss of rent or service charges on the overall financial position.
Thank you, thank you. Before I turn to members, I would add that I met the traders of Crystal Peaks a few weeks ago with yourselves and with local councillors. And I, you know, obviously they're concerned about increases in their prices, but increasing their costs. They're also concerned about the state of the markets and it's worth saying that some of the money that needs to be spent on Crystal Peaks Market needs to be raised through a charge like this, and it is a question of striking a balance between between what the traders can reasonably afford as successful businesses, which is what they are, and the needs of the markets to be kept and presented to the public in a good condition that is attractive for people to go in. So that is the decision in front of us. Again, thank you also, I suppose, for bringing this back with revised numbers. I appreciate that that members rejected the proposal earlier this year for a larger, well, for an increase of a particular size. Obviously, there's a recommendation that's come back to us of an increase of a particular size. I think members may may end up taking a lower increase than what you're asking for, just that being where we believe that it's right to strike that balance, but I'll let members come in for comments and questions. Mark.
Thank you Liam, and Craig, you're not Craig, you're Ben. You've got the wrong sign. Oh, yours has fallen on the floor there, Ben. Just threw me there for a minute. Thank you for bringing this to us. We haven't taken any increase in costs for such a long time, and I think it would be wrong of us to not recognise that those choices mean that the service will have been undermined and hollowed out somewhat. And as Joe rightly alluded, we wouldn't be putting costs up freely if we didn't have to, but we know that where we can make the service more sustainable and we can see investment in the markets and make them more sustainable, we absolutely want to do that. I think for us to not put costs up and to delay any further putting costs up would be negligent and irresponsible of us as a council. I do feel that we do need to understand what the role of our markets are. The social impact of having those markets for our communities needs to be addressed. But to do that work, I think we have to pay for it, so I do think that we do have to put up costs, absolutely. Putting up a single tranche, which is the offer that we rejected before, I think would have been too much to swallow. And I think the other thing that I think we're all struggling with here, and I know that as elected members, we've spoken to officers repeatedly about this, is this is a suck it and see option. We're really, really anxious due to the fact that as officers have tried to find comparators as to the impact of what price rises will have, nothing is available, so if we can record that through the process going forward to see what impact this has. This price point elasticity, I think that was a phrase that has been raised already, is something that we need to understand and I think it is something we're going to need to address going forward. So thank you for all the work. The one thing that I would really recommend coming out of this, and we really do want to see, I think I think we have spoken about this before, is a strategy for our markets, not just at Crystal Peaks or More Market or Street Markets, but a wider strategy of how we help support our market stores, how we can drive up their competitiveness would be great. And the only other thing that I have on this one, and this is a it's a misnomer in some ways, we're talking about full cost recovery, but that's based on 100% occupancy, we're never going to get that. Even in the most successful market, we're never going to get every stall occupied 100%. So full cost as is would be looking at 79% occupancy and that will be a moving feast depending upon the success of or otherwise of our stall holders. So I think we we need to somehow understand and build into our factors going forward that there is likely to be some element of subsidy within here, it's just what we can actually absorb while investing in the service because there is that misnomer here at the moment, so. But yeah, yeah, we're not going to go for the full cost or the recommendation. It feels too much, but I do think we do need to do a lot of work with you to make sure we can get to a position that supports your service and the stall holders at the same time. Thank you Chair.
Thank you. Yes, no, I I agree with those comments. I do think we need a market strategy on the work programme. I mean, obviously, we've had initial discussions, haven't we? But we've certainly, with big members of the National Association of British Market Authorities, we've got a source of ideas and support there that we could lean on, and I believe we should lean on, have a plan to lean on in order to develop the all the markets in the city. And the unpopular decisions we have to make in meetings like this shouldn't reflect the the ambition that we have for the market to be a success. Sue, oh sorry, yes Sue, yeah.
Thank you Chair. Yeah, just a couple of comments and two or three questions. I am a bit concerned that we could end up losing quite a few traders, and I think that concern's been expressed by the traders themselves, from my understanding. I'm also concerned that there are reports that there is quite a lot of work, maintenance type work that needs doing in that market area. I don't know it well myself, but do we have some means of making sure that the maintenance, if we're paying this service charge, we're actually getting back the value for money that we should have to make sure that that market area is well maintained and the service is given? I've also got a couple of questions. I've not been on this committee very long and I'm just confused as to why there's not been any increase since 2009. That strikes me as being a very long time. And I'm also a bit confused about why we we had asked to review this charge, the service charge, and yet we'll be getting separate papers, whatever, to review the maintenance and utilities, power charges, energy charges. It would just strike me as being a lot easier and more logical for us to be able to determine that if we could do them all together.
I completely agree. I think we should have, you know, going to the point of having a a strategy for our markets, and I think we should kind of wrap the stuff up together so that, you know, we've got a full picture. I think the difficulty we've seen is there's just been no review of utilities, service charge or rents for such a strong and a long period in time that we're in a position where we really need to make some movement in the right direction while we kind of get the strategic view together and then I think we can wrap all the the reviews up in a fuller picture rather than bringing individual ones. But the financial position we find ourselves in at the moment means that we do need to make some inroads into the large subsidies that we're offering on utilities and on service charge, so that's why we've had to bring these prior to having a sort of a fuller picture. But definitely going forward, you know, our desire would be to bring one paper so you've got a full view of what's happening, because I think that's better for the committee, it's also better for our traders as well to get a better view going forward, so we'll definitely commit to in future where we can do that full, fuller picture. The service charges do come at six month intervals, and while ever we subsidise them, they do need to come back for a specific decision. If we get to full cost recovery, then they don't need to come to committee, so, you know, we wouldn't need to take those six month papers. So the service charges and the subsidy have driven, the need to kind of bring them here in separate bits as well.
Alexi.
Thank you very much Chair. I've got a few questions. Noticed there that Sue's question wasn't answered at all, so I think I might try and answer that myself. I think the reason that increases haven't changed since 2009 is because the inability of Sheffield Labour to take difficult political decisions. Probably not the officer's position to say that, however. I'd just like to ask another few other questions. So in 2022-23, the total subsidy to Crystal Peaks Markets is £263,000. Just want to know what the total amount of subsidy has been since 2009, first of all. Do we know that?
We don't know that, but we can bring that back at a later stage, but no, we don't know that at this point.
Thank you. And in terms of rents, when were they last increased?
I believe they were in the same period in 2009 that they last.
So, and also we don't know the total amount of rent subsidy for, well, we probably do for 22-23, but since 2009. Can we get those figures as well?
The rents, not subsidy, the subsidies have been on the service charge and on the separate utilities because they should be full cost passed through, so they're where we've subsidised. The rents on Crystal Peaks are not subsidised there, they're effectively what should be the the charge on top of that, that should be what we can then invest back into the organisation and the markets.
Yeah, so I think our position, which we've made clear quite a few times in pre-meetings, is that, you know, any support to traders should be through rents and in setting the price of rents and not through charges like this. So it would be really useful to know the total amount of council subsidy to market, to the Crystal Peaks Market since 2009. I was wondering if there are any other businesses in Sheffield which have had, received similar levels of subsidy?
I think unfortunately we're not in a position to answer that. I'm not sure of the commercial arrangements that our processes might have been placed with various different organisations. It's probably something we can ask from colleagues, but we won't have that information to hand.
And do you often think it might have been more prudent to spend the money rather than just subsidising these on permanently reducing energy bills for traders, for instance, by through installation of solar panels on the market or retrofitting, rather than just subsidising the profits of energy companies as we have since 2009?
I think we've worked to improve the overall energy efficiency in both the More and the Crystal Peaks Market, we'll continue to do that. Again, to keep those energy costs down as passed through to traders.
Thank you very much for those answers. Yes, I think just, this is a comment just for the committee more that later on we'll be like considering options for, like carbon saving, so I think we should really consider retrofitting and installing renewable energy on our markets where possible, in the case of the More Market as well, looking at connecting up to the district heating.
Yeah. Thanks Alexi. I think we have had discussions about the More Market, the building which we, this is our building, we can I believe do things to, and also connecting to the district energy network is something that we've been pressing for because obviously we have a source of heat that is very green, very ecological, so we're obviously keen to get that used. I'm just going to let Mark come back in to a point he made before we carry on.
As a matter of record, you were part of the administration previously that has not put prices on to the markets, and if the Green Party are saying that they want to disadvantage stall holders, then fine. So if you want to go around scoring petty points, then we can have that debate, but let's let's try and actually deal with what we're dealing with here, and we are supporting increases, so, yeah. Yeah, I can see where you're coming from, you must be up for election or something, but you need to acknowledge that you were part of the cooperative running of the council, were you not? And did you not put forward price increases then?
Yes, okay, thank you for that. I confess, we were the administration in 2010 and 2011 up until May and didn't put anything on top of our increase in 2009, so. Maybe, maybe, you know, maybe we should have reviewed, you know, done it annually, but at least we didn't leave it for 10 years. Let's move on, shall we, Tim?
No, I mean, obviously you talk about 2009, but also some of the retrofitting, the solar panels, that sort of thing with the large feeding tariffs that were there, we could have, you know, if this council had a bit of business sense, they would have done that and benefited from that at the time once they were on, because there was a lot of feeding tariff, a lot of dealing with that, that could have been done. One of the things I was going to say, because a lot of this has been covered and overall is with the market strategy, because I'd noticed since West Suffolk has gone out of Conservative control, I've noticed that a few days ago, that, you know, that they've got a real market strategy and some real incentives for market traders they're putting in there, they're advertising it widely for trying to encourage new blood into the markets, that sort of thing. And that's something that we must do with this as well, to have a look at a proper strategy. Anywhere you go in Sheffield and around, you'll find that Sunday markets are rammed, packed with traders, and somehow we need to look at whether we can tap into having special days for traders, that there's going to be special events, there's going to be, you know, themed things for the market stalls just to encourage people in, because if you're telling the market traders to come because we've got this, you know, some special niches that people might come along to, and we're also telling the public, then that may increase footfall, because that's what we need to be doing with our markets to make sure that they're a vibrant and vigorous part of the Sheffield local economy. And Crystal Peaks, there's no reason, I mean, you know, as I've sat in traffic out that way on numerous occasions where, you know, when I've been out that way, for not to, that that part, that unique part of Crystal Peaks not to be a success and have a full offering. But we've also got to make sure that it's a welcoming place to come to, because my understanding is, you know, things like there's only one entrance, it's not really signposted from the rest of the market, from the rest of Crystal Peaks, all that sort of thing just needs to be improved because we need to make sure that the market traders feel that we appreciate them, we want them, and we want them to thrive and survive. But that cannot be exclusively from a mass, you know, a big subsidy that has increased over the years on service charge, you know, with the service charges, et cetera, and we need to, we need to improve on that. Obviously, we've got to right our situation because there's a blackout here, because obviously by not increasing service charges over the last 10 years means that cuts have had to come elsewhere from within the council for some of the services that we wanted to, would want to put money into that have been adversely affected over the last few years. So all this together, we just need to do better with our markets and make sure, and make sure that they are a vibrant part of the Sheffield economy.
Thanks, Tim, points very well made. I mean, we're danger of straying into the broader market strategy questions, but I think, I think the the point is well made, and this needs to be seen in the context of developing, you know, of developing and implementing that strategy. I'm particularly keen, I must say, to that we, and we've done this in the past, and I recognise that, the young traders market, which gets, you know, young people to, on the path towards being market traders. which gets, you know, young people to, on the path towards being market traders, is something we could really do with doing again. Ben, you've got your hand up, do you want to?
Sorry, I just wanted to be clear on the strategic point. We do have a strategy from 2019, but it needs to be updated and refreshed in line with what's happened since Covid and all that type of stuff. So we definitely need that, that updated strategy. But I just might have given you the impression that we didn't have one at all. So I just want to make that clear.
Thank you. Thank you, Ben. Yes. So getting to the point, I intend to propose, I will, I am proposing that we take option, I believe it's option five, the one that is CPI plus eight percent as the charge increased this year. With a view, I mean, it's not the recommendation doesn't deal with future years, but the signpost is that we are intending to move towards full cost recovery, but we are, you know, we are not going too fast because we don't, we don't know what the price elasticity of demand is. And therefore there's a certain amount of experimental and information gathering in the process of how we approach it. Given that it hasn't been done for so many years. I think CPI plus eight is perfectly reasonable figure for traders to take, given that they, the inflation over the last couple of years has been quite high, they will have benefited from, if they have put the prices up only with inflation. They've not done anything, you know, against their customers by going faster than inflation. If they've just followed inflation, then they ought to have the revenue to cover an increase of this nature. So that's what I'd like to do. Obviously, the decision will come back in future years as to what we do in future years. Mark?
Yeah, I think the proposal from the chair is absolutely reasonable. One of the things that we've already said, and you alluded to, Liam, in your presentation, is that without having full cost recovery, it will need to keep coming back to this committee and we're not going to get 100% occupancy. So it will by default come back to this committee. And actually, we're not committing ourselves to eight percent increase year on year for the next three years till we get to a position. Because obviously we won't reach that 100%, but it will mean that we can at least take a step in the right direction this year. And going forward, we can see how, we may go at a faster pace next year or we may go at a slower pace next year. So I think that element is something we support and I think we will support that option of CPI plus eight. Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Alexi.
Thank you very much, Chair. We would like to support the officer recommendation to go for option eight. Yeah, I can't say that the subsidy wouldn't be better spent elsewhere in the council. For example, supporting our children's services, adult health and social care, or preventing homelessness, for example. And I think, you know, going with option eight and then seeing where that, we could always have the option to review the rents to support our traders if it was such a big impact. So, yeah, we would like to support option eight, which was the officer recommendation.
Right, okay. So thank you for that, Alexi. So that, to be clear, that's CPI plus 22.6, if I'm reading the papers correctly. I think, I will just say, I mean, I take the point that money may very well be spent better elsewhere if we were to actually get that money. And that's the question. That's the question. The balance we're striking is that we don't know that the traders would stand. And psychologically, whether they'd stand a such a big increase, even if they could financially, financially deal with it. And therefore we don't know if we'd get the money. So it would be danger of spending money on other services that we wouldn't actually get. I mean, that's, that's the danger. And so therefore that's the motivation, I think, for going for CPI plus eight. It's not that we don't recognise the need for the markets to cover their costs. It's that there's a danger in going too far and too fast. Rob?
Yeah, do you have a second for your proposal, councillor? So I've heard Chair's proposal be seconded by councillor Jones. So we should take it in order. Obviously, if the first proposal is taken and a majority, then we don't go to the second. Okay?
Okay, so can I see those in favour of CPI plus eight? And those against? Okay, so that is carried. And the second proposal falls. Right, with that amendment, can we agree the recommendations of the paper? Alexi?
Can I just ask that that be, what happened then just be recorded accurately in the minutes?
Mark?
Yeah, it should be recorded accurately in the minutes. I'm not scoring any political points by making any facetious comments at this stage. I'll leave that to others. What we will need to do, I think, going forward is making sure that when this proposal goes into the budget, which is coming up now, that we reflect on how that's going to cost and where we find those cost savings within our committee. Because we're not looking to abdicate any of our responsibility on the budget. We're just looking to make sure we can make sure all parts of our committee function and are funded appropriately.
Yeah, yeah, quite right. Thank you. Yeah, so was that a request for your group's votes to be recorded as well there?
I'm happy for us to be recorded because we've got the way we have.
Yeah, no, it's the same here. I'm happy for my vote to be recorded as well. The viewing public, well, the camera was on me, you see, so they wouldn't have seen where all the hands were. But for the benefit of the, for the benefit of the public, I think that the Liberal Democrats, the Labour and the Sheffield Community Council groups all voted for the CPI plus eight and the Greens voted against it. Obviously, mine is to vote for CPI plus 22.6. Alexi?
Yeah, just could we just record that, you know, we were in support of the officer's recommendation on this proposal?
Thank you. So with that, with that amendment, can we agree the report? I'll take science as a centre of the meeting. Thank you very much. Next item is the Wasting Street Scene Budget. Thank you. If you'd like to introduce yourselves. Richard, you have already introduced yourself, but people may have forgotten, so.
Surely not, Chair, but my name is Richard Ayer. I'm the director of Streets and Regulations.
Hello, I'm Liz Gough. I'm head of Business Partnering and Finance Department. Thank you.
Thank you. Purpose of the report is set out the new financial pressures facing Wasting Street Scene Committee for 2025. This includes fees, grants and other income available to the council to offset these pressures. And it also contains proposals for how these pressures may be addressed. The recommendations are that the committee notes the new financial pressures facing Wasting Street Scene for 2025 and the new income available to help mitigate them. Also to note that the proposal mitigations will be presented to the Strategy and Resources Committee as part of the council's budget for 2025. Budget pressures for 2025. An updated medium term financial analysis was presented to Strategy and Resources Committee in September to give members an early view of the forecast financial position for the council for the next four years and to set out the financial constraints within which the budgeting and business planning process will need to work to achieve a balanced budget position over the medium term period. Over the four year period, the forecast budget gap for the council is estimated to be £61 million. For 2025, the forecast budget gap is £18 million. That will need to be bridged by services in order to set a balanced budget. For Wasting Street Scene in particular, we've got pressures of 7.7 million, the most significant of which include the RPIX uplift for the Waste and Streetshead contracts. And these are proposed to be offset by funding allocation as per the medium term financial analysis to fund the 2025 pay award of 0.5 million, funding of the RPIX contract uplift of 6.4 million, a soon uplift by inflation of fees and charges by 0.22 and a mix of historically unused budgets. This currently leaves a gap of 0.15 million. The good news since this paper was published is actually that gap has now been completely bridged. So contrary to what the report says, there is no, if these proposals are accepted, there is no further pressure on Wasting Streets. On 3.2, it does set the high level pressures. You can see there's the pay award, streetshead contract inflation, waste contract inflation, public realm pounds park and other pressures of 510,000. And then there's some high level proposals to fix those pressures. And as I've already mentioned, it does say at the bottom, target to find is 164K. That has now been completely mitigated by further corporate funding. Consultation, briefings have been held with all Wasting Streets in councils, including the chairs, the lead sports person and deputy chair, over a number of weeks to develop these proposals. Alternative options considered, the council is required to set a balanced budget and to ensure that in year income and expenditure is balanced. The options presented in this paper, if accepted, will negate the need to make any staff or resource cuts to the respective services and therefore should allow the continuation of good quality customer services. The reason for recommendations are members asked to note the unsustainable financial position highlighted by the medium term financial analysis presented to Strategy and Resources Committee in September. This report and its recommendations sets out the scale of the challenge ahead, the limited resources available and some of the difficult decisions that will be needed to take within which the Wasting Streets and but also corporately. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. So I'll come to members in a second. So thank, I mean, thank you for all your work on this. I'm particularly pleased. I don't know if we have to thank you, Liz, particularly for this, for the uplifts on the big contracts being taken corporately. However, last year, we were asked if we could find £10 million out of less than £10 million and we, of course, we didn't. So if that's your doing, then we will grovel after the meeting. Sean Ed will lead the grovelling, definitely. So I, again, thank you. I'm very pleased to see that 0.15 million has been found. Because that was, you know, if we were having to look at services and saying, where can we take, you know, 0.15 million out of, you know, graffiti or street cleaning or the city centre, then it would be really difficult. Because all of those services are really important. I don't know if you can tell us off the top of your head, the decision we've just made on markets, how that affects the position? What assumption you'd planned into that and what, where that leaves us now? That would be, that would be useful. And then I'll, then I'll go to members.
Of course, Chair. So there is a proposal of a 5.4% uplift on a selection of fees and charges, which is contained in appendix two, which is closed. Within there, there are proposals of market rents being increased by 5.4%. The service charge conversation is outside the scope of this, so it is not included. So any change of the service charge is not included. It's just the uplift of the rents by 5.4%.
Right, okay. So that means the rents, because we had a conversation about rents, market rents are going up by 5.4%. And that was a decision made, taken by S and R, is that what you're telling me?
My understanding, Liz, or correct me if I'm wrong on this, is these proposals go to the next S and R.
Ah, okay, okay. So they're not being made yet. Okay, I mean, seeing as they've come up, I would, I would, I do have a comment on the, again, it's a closed appendix, I won't refer to any numbers. I do have a general comment. There do seem to be a number of items in there that have not been uplifted by inflation for some time. And therefore there is a reasonable case to be made in some of those cases to say, well, look, let's not just do one year's CPI, but what is the total inflation loss that we've had in those figures? Because that, you know, because in some of those cases, we can and should be charging, you know, a fair price and using that to improve our budget position. Is that something that can be taken away? I don't know if it's in time, in time for the decision S and R, but I don't know if that's something that can be considered.
Yes, certainly. If you think that the fees should be increased by more, that is an opportunity for you to look at and to bring back to this committee. The notion of 5.4% uplift was put into the Strategy and Resources Committee based on CPI so that we weren't subsidising services that we do charge for. So it's a notion of target for committees to consider. That said, there was somebody who may think you didn't want to put up by 5.4% for whatever reasons, for quality reasons, whatever. Or there's ones that you think you should be putting up by more, that is within your gift.
Right, okay, thank you. So I expect, well, we'll have a discussion, but there may be a paper coming back on some of those. Quite right in what you say, some of those may maybe are not appropriate to increase at all. But I, you know, I'm concerned that we don't just forget that there are fees that we're charging that need to follow inflation and that we neglect to do it because that would be remiss of us. Mike?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Richard, for this, this report. It is pleasing to see that we are not in the same position we were last year when we were looking at a huge budget shortfall to try and, try and balance. I just have a question about when you went into some detail about the way, about the pressures listed on page 131 of the report. And there's a single line which refers to a mix of historically unused budgets. And it would be useful for members to know what budgets we're looking at here, which clearly have sums of money earmarked against them, but clearly we're not, we're not using them. So just trying to tease that out, please.
Thanks, councillor. In appendix one, which is closed, the full list of the details there. How this has come about is as part of this process, as you'd expect from good governance. I've had officers going real deep dives across the service to look under every aspect, test everything out. Have we got budgets in there which historically we're not spending? This is the result of that. So it's prudent financial management where staff have gone through all the budgets. Bear in mind, the budget's across the services around £80 million. Staff have done some great work, actually going into every corner to try and find every bit we can, we can use to mitigate that overall pressure.
I appreciate that, but I'm sensing that you're, there's some cards being kept very close to your chest there. And I do sympathise, but it might help members to have a feel of perhaps a couple of the pots that have been identified and what they were relating to.
It is closed, so I'll take advice from legal colleagues. We've discussed this in the briefing sessions as well on a regular basis, but I'm happy to have that conversation. But I'll take advice from legal colleagues.
Pretty straightforward. If we want, if members wish to debate and hear about items in the closed appendix, then the committee should consider going to a closed session for that.
Yeah, it wasn't really to open up a debate, but just to get a sense of what, what was around, really.
Well, I think, I think it's in your, I'm happy to follow your call, Mike. If you want to ask the question, then we will close the meeting and you can ask the question. Sean, do you want to come in here?
Yeah, I would suggest that perhaps because we know that our viewing public will then be left with a blank screen for a while, that perhaps we ought to consider this item later when we can ask the questions we'd like to, as in at the end of the agenda. And if we're choosing to say that we want to do closed issues, because otherwise it's, you know, we're going to have a very spotted discussion about this, aren't we? Because we do want to be able to ask some questions and to have some stuff in the middle which we can't discuss makes very little sense. I would say there was a precedent for this, that we did this at the Education Committee last week or the week before, where we said we will discuss it at the end of the meeting in a closed session. And then we reopened it such that we could have the recommendations. But it does seem a bit strange to have a report with bits we can't talk about and to dip in and out of closed session rather than to do it in a more sensible way, Jo.
Yes, well, of course, I want to take your advice on what is sensible. But I mean, the next item on the agenda is also one which has closed appendices. So, I mean, if we move this to the end, that wouldn't necessarily prevent us having to dip in and out. I'm quite happy to, within this item, to have all the questions on the appendix together. But I think since we've started this item, we're somewhere into it, I think it would be, it would be more confusing to adjourn this item, to move to another item, which may also involve closed sessions and then come back to this item to have more discussion on this in and out of closed session. I mean, I think, you know, I want to minimise the number of interruptions, really. It's probably the overriding standard of sensibility here. Does that, does that make sense?
It does, but I don't think you're right.
Well, okay, no, now, are there any more questions from members on the, on the open part of the report? Can we, can we, Tim?
The only thing is, I'm looking through the appendix, obviously I'm not going to relate.
to relate to any of it, but I cannot see why any of it is restricted, it just seems ridiculous, I can't see anything that is going to adversely affect, it's not about, there's not nothing in there about an individual and there doesn't appear to be anything that wouldn't be, I just can't see it. I've been going through it and looking for something that I could see that would be something that would mean that we would have to withhold from the public, I can't see it personally.
Can we ask Rob about that?
Paradox is that we start debating whether things are or aren't, or shouldn't be, subject to the exemption, then we'd need to go into closed session. So I think, take the challenge of making sure that we are confident and comfortable in future, I can see a number there that actually do seem to impact on the commercial interests of individuals, including the authority, it's a nonsense for me to raise them now given that we're in an open session, but I'm comfortable with them being exempt and if they want to be discussed, the advice is that the committee should go into closed session during this item.
Thank you, thanks for that advice, so I don't see any other hands on items for the open session, Mike, I'll put it to you again, do you want to put your question? In which case I'll close the meeting.
Yes.
Thank you, can we move into closed session please? If you want to pause the recording, thank you, we'll be back. We have a, do you have a member, are you with the press? Yes, okay, can we make, yeah, so, yeah, you've got, have we restarted? Are we live? Welcome back, welcome back members of the public, there'll just be a moment while we fetch the press back in, I hope you've had a chance to make a cup of tea, that's the main thing, I wish I had a cup of tea, I should have bought a flask.
I'll make a note.
It's not a budget pressure, if I bring my own flask of tea, that's pressure on my personal budget maybe, but biscuits, yeah.
He's not coming back.
He's not coming back? Did he not come to report on food waste? I mean, that's, oh, okay. Right, thank you, we are back in session, back in public session, are there any more questions and comments on the budget paper? If not, can that paper be agreed? I'll take silence until the end of the meeting, thank you, that is agreed. Okay, the next item is the food waste collection service transitional arrangement, we are down to 25 minutes in this meeting, so we may have to extend to deal with this, but let's, they don't have much to do, they'll be fine, they can wait. Morning Neil, do you want to introduce yourself? Richard, having introduced yourself twice, I think you're probably good now. Don't think your mic was on there, do you want to try that again?
Sorry about that, my name's Neil Towne Row, I'm the Waste Strategy Officer for the council.
Thanks, do you want to present the report?
Yeah, so the purpose of the report is to set out a new requirement in respect to providing food waste recycling collections and details the benefits and dis benefits associated with three options, it's available to us in order for us to meet our statutory obligations. One of the options is to introduce the food waste service in line with government timescales and that there's two options that would seek to defer the introduction to a later date and the recommendation set out in the report is to apply to government for a transitional arrangement until 2038 to defer the requirement to introduce weekly food waste collections until the end of the Veolia contracts. The Environment Act was an excellent law in 2021, sets out a number of provisions with respect to waste, but in terms of food, in October this year, government finally announced that local authorities across the country would have to introduce weekly food waste collections by 31st of March 2026 unless a transitional arrangement is in place. A new food service would require additional containers provided to households across the city, outside bins and indoor bins for the collection of food waste, additional diesel and electric vehicles and the food waste collector will be sent to an anaerobic digestion facility. As household waste, the service will be provided through the Veolia contract which runs until 2038 and clearly because of the vehicle requirements, containers, there's additional costs associated with providing that service. Government has announced as a new statutory service that new burdens funding will be made available to contribute to the cost, implementation and ongoing costs of the service. Detail of this government funding, they've announced that £295 million is available for implementation costs, we estimate that Sheffield will get about 1%, which is £2.95 million, but there's no details in terms of any amounts of ongoing funding the council would receive. Government have just said they would cover reasonable costs. Government have however confirmed that the new burdens funding available would not cover any costs associated with the, any claims received from existing long-term residual waste contracts and because Veolia have indicated they would look to recover some costs, we have what available to us, the opportunity to apply for a transitional arrangement that would delay the introduction of food waste collections to a later date, no later than the end of the existing contract, that's subject to ministerial approval and the implementation date, if agreed, will be set in the commencement regulation, so fully detailed in law. Initial conversations with DEFRA earlier this year indicated that local authorities applying for a transitional arrangement would not be able to access new burdens funding, so it was kind of you applied for it and there was no opportunity for the funding, but the position on that's now changed, so we had recent discussions with them and they've confirmed that if we have a TA, as soon as you introduce food waste collection, subject to spending reviews at the time, you will be entitled to receive that funding moving forwards. Government have also stated that if a local authority has a transitional arrangement, they would look to engage in annual discussions with that local authority to see if there's any opportunity to roll in, bring forward food waste collections before the end of the transitional arrangement and if there is, subject to conversations with government and ministerial approval, you both bring that date forward and access the new burdens funding as provided then. If we, if the council didn't choose to apply for a transitional arrangement, we would be mandated to provide a weekly food waste service by 31st of March 2026. So of the three options we've put, we've presented in the paper, option one is to roll out the weekly food waste service by 31st of March 2026. In doing so, residents will be able to recycle the food waste from home across the city. However, there is uncertainty on funding, as I said, we don't have full clarity on the new burdens funding available, and there is a high risk that the funding received wouldn't cover all the costs we incur from the service. We've estimated, based on the information available, that the service cost would be about £3 million, which is identified in the medium term financial analysis, however, there is the risk that the actual cost of the service could be more because we don't have that clarity on what the funding would be. And in terms of the independent carbon monitoring, so we've done some independent carbon impact modelling of the service, so if we introduced a weekly food waste collection service, this modelling came through saying it would achieve a 78 tonne CO2 equivalent carbon saving across the city and that is basically, it's a marginal increase and it's basically because of the increased traffic movements associated with providing weekly service, the additional collection vehicles and also the efficiency of the energy recovery facility, the fact that food waste is collected in the black bin currently is then burnt to produce heat and power. It's also worth noting that in Sheffield, the energy recovery facility, only 0.01% of waste across the city goes to landfill, the rest of it is either recycled or through the energy recovery facility. Options two and three presented in the report are to seek approval to apply for a transitional arrangement, option two is until 2031, so relatively short term transitional arrangement, option three is an application until 2038, that takes us till the end of the Veolia contracts. An application until 2038 protects the council from any claims received from Veolia in terms of the impacts the introduction of food waste service has on the energy recovery facility, so it protects the council from increased cost claims there that wouldn't be covered at all by any new burdens funding from the government, but it also protects the council from the unknown and ongoing budgetary pressure the introduction of the service might have. As I say, we've estimated about a £3 million cost, but the reality is it could be more, which you don't know because we don't have that clarity, so it protects us from that increased risk throughout the council for the ongoing service. But it also provides flexibility for the service because government will be in conversations with their local authorities with a transitional arrangement on an annual basis, so although the transitional arrangement could be until 2038, it doesn't mean we have to wait until 2038 to introduce the service, but we would have an informed position based on what government is saying at the time in terms of what funding is available, so they can then decide whether, when is best to introduce the service. It would also allow time for the electric vehicle technology and infrastructure to develop, currently it's relatively new to the market, we've really have done some trials of it, but it's been limited success because of various issues with the actual product at the moment, but in future years, that product should be better, hopefully the costs will come down, which would mean that if we rolled out electric vehicles for a food waste service, the costs would come down in theory and the technology would be better. A transitional arrangement would also recognise the low carbon savings that we would achieve from the service and because we've got £3 million identified in the medium term financial analysis, there is the possibility to either use that funding for alternative council-wide pressures or potentially look to use that for projects or initiatives that could deliver greater carbon savings, but it should be worth pointing out that that money is unfunded, we've identified it as a risk from 2025-26, but it is unfunded. The dis benefits with the transitional arrangement would be that, you know, residents wouldn't be able to recycle their food waste until after the transitional arrangement expires or when we introduce it and the council wouldn't be able to take advantage of any new burdens funding until that point, however, we do have the flexibility to review the situation and be able to take an informed decision as to when we roll out the food waste service based on a known position of funding where we are in the council. And of the three recommendations, option three is the recommended option simply because the maximum flexibility that's provided to the council, we have clear transparency from government in terms of what funding is available and we can take an informed decision with our eyes wide open, we'd look to roll that service out.
Thank you, I saw Mark.
Thank you Chair, I was expecting to ask you a question earlier there, thanks for the presentation Neil, the ongoing yearly reappraisal which government mean, which government is offering and the retention of the new burdens for future years, for me almost makes option two almost irrelevant because if we go for option three, it gives us the greatest flexibility. And there is a couple of elements here that I do want to kind of talk about, the carbon saving is small, which is disappointing, but I get that it's part of the transporting process. Where do our partners Veolia feel they are? What's the conversation looking like in terms of when they're going to be ready to do the food waste stuff? And the other element is, is we mentioned in the briefings, the Friday briefings about why can't we just come past the food and legislation says it has to go to anaerobic digestion. If we were to move some of the, if we were to put the food in with the garden waste and then send all that to anaerobic digestion and if that AD was to occur here in Sheffield, do we have a feeling of how much carbon saving we could achieve that way and how much we could improve the climate impact of this proposal? Because it feels like there is some element of scale that we should be exploring and looking to get from here and I know that obviously not all garden waste would necessarily have to go to the AD, but we may have to do that, so there's something about how, what mitigations we could put in place by combining services as we already have and maybe rolling out a wider garden waste, a universal garden waste with the food waste, what other options are we looking at here and what are your thoughts on that and what's your understanding where Veolia is on this? Thank you Chair.
Thanks Mark, I just, slightly concerned, your question does touch on the conversations with Veolia which are a matter for one of the closed appendices, so with your permission, can we restrict the question to the other parts of it and we can come back to closed matters if you feel that's still necessary? Thank you Neil.
Thank you councillor, so as part of the announcement in October, the government did change its position because previously they always said that food waste would have to be collected separately from garden waste, that position has softened and it does allow local authorities to collect the two combined. However, in terms of meeting the requirements of the Environment Act for food waste, it has to be a weekly service and it has to be free, so therefore if we were looking to piggyback on top of the existing garden waste service, obviously the existing garden waste collection service is chargeable and also it's every two weeks, so if we were looking to utilise that service for this, then we'd have to look at that as well and the associated costs with it. It's feasible, it can be done, but obviously that's an altogether new service and it's very recent announcement from government, so we could do the numbers and in terms of what that looks like, but we'd have to work with Veolia on that clearly. But it can go through in vessel or anaerobic digestion as the two options in terms of the route for that, generally speaking, when you mix garden and food waste, it is through in vessel, but anaerobic digestion is the government's preferred method for anaerobic for food waste. In terms of a local arrangement with a more localised Sheffield solution, that, there's limited opportunity to recycle food waste on a large scale within Sheffield itself, so we'd have to look at what opportunities are out there, potentially, you know, look at small centralised facilities that could potentially become available and then once we have the understanding of that, we can then have discussions about whether a local trial or service could be feasible, but if we did look to roll out a citywide service, then we do need the sustainable, large scale outlets through anaerobic digestion service. So I would see that a smaller localised offering would probably supplement anything beyond that, but we would never sort of switch off to it and we'd have to have discussions with Veolia because within the Veolia contracts, they do have exclusivity for household waste, so that's not to say that we can't deliver outside of that, we have to have a discussion and engagement with Veolia to get approval and agreement with them and work with them on it.
Thank you, Mike.
Yes, thank you Chair and thank you Neil for this well-framed report, I know you did a lot of work with the food waste collection pilot last year, which certainly demonstrated that it is possible to run that kind of waste collection service. I'm concerned that there aren't the anaerobic digestion plants around or sufficiently close to the city to make the scheme viable and I'm also concerned that while ever we are sending food waste to the combined heat and power plant in Sheffield, that we're sending quite a lot of water content, which is not actually mentioned in the report, but I think previously when the matters come up, and I seem to remember from a site visit, they were saying that having so much water going in from the food waste, that it actually undermines that process. I think it's disappointing all round really that government hasn't pursued a more dynamic way forward so that we could...
We can say that about the government over so many things.
We can, or we will say it over this point in particular. Thank you Chair.
Yep, thank you councillor, so just on that point, yes, the development of the anaerobic digestion treatment capacity, well, is in development so to speak, I think industry across the board have been knowing that food waste is coming, but they have been waiting for it to be fully confirmed and actual implementation dates come in, so over the next few years, there should be more anaerobic digestion facilities and treatment plants becoming available, hopefully more local to Sheffield, even if it's not in Sheffield but around, you know, closer to the area, which would help and again, that's another potential positive for a transitional arrangement because we'll have that increased certainty and knowledge where the locations are. With regard to the food waste and the energy recovery facility, yes, you're absolutely correct that it does have a high moisture content and that clearly doesn't burn well, but the plant is designed on the typical composition of household waste, so the high calorific, low biojanic type, plastic types waste, a kind of counterbalance... are kind of counterbalanced by the by the high biojanic but low calorific weight waste from food waste. And it's designed to have that sort of counterbalance and mix, which enables it to to burn the waste into certain throughput and maximise the kind of, you know, the the throughput of the burning of the waste into the plant.
Thanks. Tim?
I can't understand how we're going to be thirty five, forty years after other councils who have interest food waste collections if we went to twenty thirty eight. Having been to more anaerobic digesters in their previous employment than I care to, I I query and and of different types and different methods that they use, I can't understand why we haven't got a grip with this over the years, that we haven't moved forward and we're going to be last. My presumption as well is the government money that they're talking about for some for the transition, the more councils are, say Sheffield decided to opt out, the more money is available for the other councils, I would say, because it's a it's a pot the government have got that they will spend. So basically, if we're looking at other councils which may apply for, there can't be so many for the money to help them implement the service, there's likely to be more money for Sheffield if we are one of the forerunners, which means there's more money available for us. And, you know, just that the Merle to yesterday, there's, they were talking about it was nice for once for South Yorkshire to be at the front of the queue for money rather than at the back of the queue, which it appears to be when there's no money left. And so I query, I query some of the figures and the caloric values, the drier the waste is, the better burns it burn it is. And modifications, I won't go into Viola's contract on this, but, you know, but modifications that could be made that would make it burn more efficiently with less wet waste in there. And also looking at other solutions such as what type of food waste, because I know it's come through from the government, that what types of food waste can go into the different bins as well, because obviously the garden waste collection in other councils that they've they've had food waste, lots of the, you know, the peelings and all that sort of stuff going into their food waste. And so I think we're being, you know, when we're looking at, you know, sort of this very long, potentially a very long lead timer to this, I'm I I am not convinced at all that this is the route we should be taking.
Can I can I just ask members to agree a half hour extension because we're almost at plus twelve? Yep. Is that agreed? That's great. Thank you. Neil, do you want to answer that?
On 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 the funding, there is a pot of funding available, that the funding will be awarded, as we understand, to to local authorities through ministerial agreements and issues through section thirty one grant. We don't have any more detail on that. But yeah, I suppose if councils do have a transitional arrangement in theory, there'll be more available. With that, one of the one of the disadvantages of applying for transitional arrangement, we wouldn't receive the new burdens funding straight away, we would miss out on initial ones until it's introduced. But it would obviously allow a more informed decision process based on knowing what funding is available and and allowing some of the technology from electric vehicles to to develop and proceed. On the food waste, so types of food, sorry, types of food waste into the bin.
When we're talking about, you know, if if there were other proposals coming forward, for instance, if I make it clear, that some of the food waste and that we negotiate something along with the green bins, that that would go in there as part of a moving over arrangement, we've we've got none of that in the plan either to have a sort of almost as if a hybrid where we're moving over to having the full food waste, but we don't appear to have any of those plans or or looking at where we could move forward with that at all. There doesn't, there there isn't, is there? Because you talked about it, you touched on that, other councils have traditionally done that, but we've got no proposal on that, you know, no other ways that we can look at where we can move speedily towards a food waste collection by having an interim, something that would be more interim, but wouldn't actually increase the number of bins that would give householders the ability to put put stuff in their garden waste collection that lots of other councils as part of their garden waste collections can do. And and to offset it that way, you've got nothing, nothing like that planned.
The government position on the the fact that local authorities will be able to co-collect garden waste and food was only announced middle of October is is very new. So as part of the options that we would work up moving forwards, that would be thrown into mix to have a look at what could be done with garden waste. But obviously with the with the understanding that the garden waste service at the moment is fortnightly and it's chargeable and we would have to make a change to a weekly service and it would have to be a free collection of food waste even because it was charged for garden. So there there are options that would need to be looked at and probably reviewed as part of a waste strategy kind of development as well. But as I say, because government was always very clear on the separate collection element of it for the last few years, it was a quiet mark change that came through in the middle of October. So something we need to pick up and and progress.
Thanks. Alexi?
Thank you very much, Chair. Before I go on to other bits, just on this part of the report, I've got a few questions before we go into the debate. So the first question was, I wanted to agree with Mark, I don't understand why option two is there because we can, you know, any op, we're going to review it annually, so I didn't really see the need for that option two. So just to clarify that. The second question is, just to clarify as well, that even when we, if we go for the transitional arrangement, residents can still recycle food waste voluntarily and they could do that at home or they could do that through a community scheme. So just, you know, want some clarity on that one. And then the last question I've got is, are there any, or what would be the impacts and is there any implication on getting, if we did apply for a TA and get the TA, on the development of the South Yorkshire Joint Waste Management Plan?
Yep. Thank you, councillor. Option two, it is just there to provide another alternative, obviously a more short term approach, just buy a bit of time to 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 allow the picture to sort of dust to settle, know what the funding is available. But then obviously the mandate, we would be then mandated in two thousand and thirty, thirty one to provide the service. So and that's why the recommendation for option three was there because you get that, but all the more flexibility on the back of that. I take your point on that absolutely. Absolutely correct about the 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 fact that people can recycle their food waste at home through the composting routes. You have it green hairs and and various different types of composting available and if they have access to a composting scheme, then then great. And in terms of the impact and developments of a South Yorkshire wide waste management plan, the other South Yorkshire authorities with respect to food waste have secured a transitional arrangement until two thousand and forty. So they won't, well, Sheffield also is separate, but the rest of the local authority, it won't be until two thousand and forty. That's because they've got a a plant for their residual waste treatment and it's got mechanical biological treatment, so it does extract some food waste for 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 recycling from that. So that there wouldn't be an impact on the basis of that then.
Thank you, Alexi. I mean, I just say, I mean, I I I get sense option two, nobody's looking to support the logic of it is, and there were comments on this, is that it is a, it would function as a commitment device. It would be designing now that we want to force ourselves to do it in the future because we believe, we might believe without that, we wouldn't do it. So that that's that's kind of logic. And in a sense, it's irrational, but a commitment devices, obviously, you you get them in monetary policy, you get them, if you've seen the film Doctor Strangelove, they don't always, obviously they can go wrong, but but, you know, they 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 have a certain logic to them. I don't see any other hands on questions, but if there are, yeah, comments, Mark?
It was just a question that came out of Alexi's stuff. Are we aware of what other councils are doing to encourage citizens to compost their food waste at home? What supports put in place and how much other councils are expending on such such individual choices?
Thank you, guys. We don't, I can't say we have any understanding of what other local authorities are spending on those sorts of activities and promotions. There is a national love food hate waste campaign, which is all about reducing food waste, but then also recycling maximum, recycling food waste as well through, if your local authority has a curbside scheme, through that scheme, but also through composting at home, which we, as Sheffield, we do tap into a little bit, but I think definitely there is an opportunity to pursue that more, take advantage of some of the more of the national picture and the material that is there to push it forwards. And that's also something we'll be doing in future years.
Thank you. Alexi?
So are we are we moving now to, yeah, okay, thank you. So I think, you know, from reading the report, I think it's clear that the carbon savings are not enough and the cost is prohibitively expensive. And it wouldn't allow for local processing of food waste to support local food growing under the current proposals that we did have or, you know, the circular economy, food resilience. And I'm minded to think that the better, there'll be better ways to spend the money in order to achieve greater carbon savings and impact on the environment. But I will say that although we would like a lot more money from government to support food waste, I think this really demonstrates that the P F, the Viola PFI contract was not a good good idea and not good for the the city and vindicates Greens for opposing this and also the other huge PFI deals. And moving on to the, what we could use the money for, for, I mean, I like the proposal of subsidising.
Mark, Mark, Mike, sorry, Alexi, just just to be clear, the the proposals for what we could use them for are are in a closed appendix. So I I'm not clear why that is closed, to be honest, it doesn't look to be.
It was an error, so appendix two is probably.
Ah, right, okay. Thank you. Okay, I've just been advised that that was an error and appendix two doesn't have to be closed. So please, go ahead.
Thank you very much, Chair. Yes, I just want to, yeah, say that, yeah, I thought the suggestion of subsidised public transport to get that modal shift and moving people on to, back on to buses to make them viable again, would be something that we should absolutely explore. Other things, other proposals would be increasing staffing and the work of the council's great sustainability team. Because I think that, you know, that would allow for a strategic view of how we can make carbon savings across the council. I was also wondering if there'd be some scope for using this on local trials for food waste, supporting home and community, community composting of food waste with provision of wormeries or hot bins or other sorts of composters to support local food growers. And also suggesting that maybe we could use some of the the three million, if it turns out to be three million, for retrofitting, insulating and installing renewables on council buildings, for example, the Crystal Peaks market, as we discussed earlier.
Thanks. I think you're okay saying three million, is that right? Because that's the figure in the M T and the medium term financial strategy. The other fig, the other figures, obviously the closed appendix, you can't say any of those. So I think I think that's that's fine. Richard?
Thank you, Chair. Just two points of clarity. The waste contract isn't a PFI, it's on the streets head contract, what's a PFI? And on the the three million pound chair, it is, as we said in the report, it's not cash we've got there, it's in the M T F A as a pressure, a corporate pressure. So I don't want councillors to think it's sat there ready to spend. We would have to go to S and R to be approved to be a pressure and found across the various committees if we do commit to.
Thanks, Mark.
For that clarification, I'll just change that PFI to privatised contract then. Thank you.
Mark?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, there was a lot in what Alexi was saying there and trying to unwrap it into something we could take going forward i- i- is difficult. I I'm glad that you mentioned about the the love food hate waste because because more than anything, I've spoken on this before, I hate throwing food away, as you can tell from the size of me, I always eat it. But it does it does feel like there there could be something to explore. I'm not sure about cost implications of this and I'm cautious about proposing something that has a cost that we've not committed to yet. So I would love to see us, because of the the difficulties of moving to a food waste collection service as is, to do more on that love food hate waste bit and actually what we can do to help our citizens to reuse their food waste in a more productive and sustainable manner. As as part of, I don't know whether this has to come as a as a, an additional amendment to to option three or whether that would be, could be done implicitly through option three as the moment. So any advice as to whether that needs to be a different proposal, I I would I would take, or whether that could be incorporated in option three as is?
I'm not clear what the proposal is. Something to do with love, love food hate waste is a.
It it's working with our citizens as part of the transitional agreement, working with our citizens in the short term to to promote citizens actively composting their own food at home in a voluntary basis.
Working to promote composting with, yeah, yeah, probably, okay. I mean, I I think that's, I think that's a useful proposal that could be taken away, isn't it? Yeah, okay. Whether that's, yeah, whether that needs to be attached to option three, again, I'm 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 not. I'm I'm indifferent. Tim?
Yeah, you've got to be careful when you're talking about composting, wormeries, et cetera, about what type of food waste, because it is different types of food waste that is suitable for composting and and the wormeries and all that sort of thing, you know, if we're not, if if you're putting together a that sort of proposal without actually indicating to people what sorts of things that can be composted easily in the garden without actually putting stuff into composters, et cetera, that could potentially go into our water system, et cetera, and contaminate it. We've just got to be a bit careful about the route we take down with this on how and how we do it if we, if you were minded to do that proposal. So it'd have to be a proposal that would indicate, because it's not a substitute for food waste collection per se.
Okay, can I can I suggest we we dispose of the options and then consider whether this can be, is sufficient for this to be a steer that we're interested in promoting composting or whether that needs to, a further paper to come back to us with with, you know, with options. I don't, because I'm not sure really what the ask is here. But let's let's dispose of the options. So I've I've we've had some comments on 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 the options. I'm going to make some comments. Look, I referred a few moments ago to to the value of commitment devices. I, my fear is that if we don't choose option one, despite the ability of the council to review it, that we will never, without that, without that commitment in place, that we will, it will not happen. And it will not happen potentially until twenty thirty eight. And who knows what the landscape will look like then. And when I came to this city, I understood we had a, you know, in nineteen eighty nine, I heard all sorts of things about how green a city it was, how how many parks, how many trees, how great we were at recycling. That was that was something, that was a message that was put out there. And that was before being green was fashionable, before the Green Party had any councillors. So 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 it's it's disheartening that half the half the country is doing food waste and that we've not done it because we didn't have to. And even after we have to, we're we're talking about whether we can still not do it. And that is the, that is completely the wrong way around. It's the sort of thing that the city should be doing before we have to. And we should overcome the the kind of the procedural and financial and and technical obstacles which have been put to us quite rightly by officers and show some ambition and determination. So I I I am minded to support option one. I'd like to propose, if I have a second, I thank you, Tim, that we take option one and go ahead with a food waste collection service. Are there any other proposals?
I think we should go for option three for the report, everything that's laid out in the report, unless you would like to propose defaulting on the Viola contract.
I've got to say, you reminded me, so I didn't, I I admitted from my comments, I mean, you were quite right to raise, it's it's good that we can discuss. I hadn't planned to mention it because I thought it was a closed appendix, the the alternative uses for the money. I've got to say, I am quite underwhelmed by them. There's some, you know, some electric buses, that would be nice, but that's the kind of level we're talking about. It's not a, it's not a transformation in terms of public transport, it's not, you know, an extra super tram line. I did speak to officers, say, look, if you could give us a line, you know, an extra super tram track, that would be something that would be really make a difference to to carbon emissions. But what is in that that appendix, I'm underwhelmed. I remember is the public going to be able to see appendix two now that it's been declassified? Is that the website going to be altered to to reflect that? Because I think it's important. It's already, okay, thank you for that. But sorry, you, you, there's a big proposal. Is there a second offer, Mark?
I'll I'll second the option three, but but again.
I'll second the option three, but again, if we're going to move on to the caveats that I suggested before, with Tim's suggestions noted.
Okay, thank you for that. Are we ready to have some votes? I think it might be clear, let's do it anyway.
Just for clarity, are you proposing option three has those, that additional wording? Or are you comfortable that the officers would go away and bring something back on composting?
Yeah, I'd be happy to support something explicitly going into that.
That was to, just to make sure we've got the language right, was to, for officers, to ask officers to explore, what was it? Explore how the council can support citizens to take the active choice into composting at home whilst we explore moving towards a more formal food waste collection in future years. But I know, I don't want to force Alexi's hand on this one, so I'm happy to take a composite approach.
Yeah, just the addition of home and community, voluntary home and community composting.
Yeah, the home and community, to allow for community schemes to be, to settle.
And maybe we could speak to the Sheffield Food Partnership, who released the food strategy in partnership with the council earlier this year, would be a good.
I can see you taking away quickly, Rob, so have you captured all of that? Yeah, so I've got, so it's option three is being proposed and seconded, but it's including to explore how the council can encourage, could encourage citizens to consider options for voluntary home and community composting. It might be that that addition is implicit within the.
I'm slightly nervous about bringing in the, what we would call them, food partnership people, because they're not, they're dealing with food that isn't food waste, that people are supposed to eat. So I don't want to slur them, slur, you know, impugn the quality of what they do. But yeah, I think the point is well made.
Yeah, and I think that's. I think, so I think the Chair's raised a concern as to why it shouldn't be explicit, but. As we're just exploring, it means that we're not necessarily committing to it. So actually, I'm quite happy to leave it in there as something that we will explore, but we're not absolutely committing to. But we would actually want to commit to the home and community recycling elements of it. But all options on the table to make it as best, the best policy going forward.
Working with partners is raising.
Yes, with partners is something I think we can all agree.
Right, so can we go back to option one then? Can I see those in favour of option one to proceed with the food waste service? And those against? And that has fallen. Can I have votes on that recorded? So that's myself, and also councillor Huggins voted in favour of that. And so option three with the addition regarding composting, can I see those in favour of that? And those against? Thank you. So that option three is carried. Are we happy to move to the decision in that case? I guess, I mean, we're effectively taking the decision between the options, but just on the formality of the report, which I think I will now vote against the report itself. So I think we should put that to the vote. So on the officer's recommendations as amended, can I see those in favour? And those against? And that is carried, okay. All right, thank you for that. There is one more item on the agenda, which was sent in a supplement, which is the Parking Services Report. We've got, yeah, we've got 15 minutes left on. This is what confused me earlier, because I was going through my packet, it's all been put together, but it starts again at page one. So if, yeah, you might have a separate pack. Sal, if you want to introduce yourself and the report, thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Good afternoon. I'm Sabia Hanif, Parking Services Manager. This report seeks approval of the publication of Parking Annual Report. That covers 22 to 23 financial year. It provides the opportunity to set out clearly and transparently the what, why and how of our civil enforcement activities. So it includes the partnership working that we actually do, supporting the local community, such as your schools, religious establishments. Also talks about the Sheffield Clean Air Zone, also about the new developments that we've been doing, and how parking management is managed. Also covers the financial information as well. And also under the legislation as well, we have to publish our accounts every year as well. So we've been quite transparent on our financial information as well. All the implications were considered part of this, and the recommendation is that if the committee notes the contents of the annual parking report and adorses the report for the publication. Any questions?
Any questions, Alexi? Well, if you're not ready, Alexi, I'll go to Sue.
Thank you. Thank you for the report. Just one or two questions, if that's okay. So on page 17, it just talks about pavement parking being rolled out to other areas. And I just wondered whether there were any specific areas you had in mind. I am very much aware that a lot of the issues happen in residential areas, where there are lots of terrace properties and narrow streets, and pavement parking is almost the only option available to residents. So I just wondered what, where you were thinking of, or where is in the plan for rolling out to? That's my first question. And my second question is on page 19, around the Arundel Gate bus closure, which talks about a further period of statutory consultation. And I just wondered whether any specific contact was going to be made to those people who've been penalised in that by using the gate when they weren't allowed to, to ask them for their feedback specifically.
Thank you. Yeah, for the first point about pavement parking, we've only got that in within the city centre. We don't have the powers to do it outside the Sheffield, outside the city centre. So the traffic regulation order that we've got is only within the city centre that we introduced last year. So the report does cover the last year activities that we've done. So at the moment, we've got a traffic regulation order for the city centre. I think what proves difficulty is that whenever you do any pavement parking, it has to be supported by the traffic regulation order and the signage. And we haven't got the budget to be able to do that across Sheffield City. There is a national consultation that was taken place a couple of years ago, and we're still waiting for the results for that. So the results haven't come out of that, that how local authorities can approach that across nationally. So at the moment, it's only in the city centre. The next point about Arundel Gate, because this covers the last year activities, it talks about that we were proposing the Arundel Gate at the time, and it has, it's a traffic regular, it was experimental, but it's now made permanent now. So the Arundel Gate is staying there, but we are continuing working with the local communities. We are listening, I think there's further work being done. The Arundel Gate's not going to get removed or anything like that, but we have done like quite a lot of signage around it, so people are aware of it. And we did find that a lot of them, that are, continue to get the fines off from outside Sheffield City. And so we're doing quite a lot of work with the universities and the theatres to make sure that people are aware of the Arundel Gate bus gates. Parking enforcement is all about achieving the compliance levels, and that's what we're trying to do.
Thanks. It was just a bit, because in the report it says a further period of consultation is now taking place, so I assumed it was current.
Yeah, that might have been an error in the report, because I think it was focused on last year, so we can amend that.
Yes, thank you, if you can amend that. I was going to raise, I'll raise it now. Obviously, I have raised this in briefings, the appendix A has an error in that it talks of changes to parking tariffs that came in last summer, summer last year, as being recommended, and current being the previous charges. So obviously, that's an error as well. I think we need to probably scour the whole document for the things that may be a little bit out of date. Alexi?
Thank you very much, Chair, and yeah, thank you for, I just wanted to thank the Parking Services team and Parking Enforcement, because CAOs do have a really difficult and flakless task. Unfortunately, despite their best efforts, you know, we don't have the powers to enforce much of the obstructive parking in the city. And unfortunately, it's a fact that Sheffield roads are an incredibly dangerous and hostile environment for people walking, wheeling and cycling, especially children, who are 40% more likely to be killed or seriously injured in Sheffield than the nearest comparable core city. So, you know, I still think there is, although the government needs to give us the powers to enforce, there are still scope for improvement. So I've just got a few questions that weren't really covered in the report, but that might be, because it's too early to say, but have the reduced observation times that we've implemented in the last committee increased the efficiency of CAOs? Do we have any?
Yeah, it is quite early, because that happened only a couple of months ago when we got the decision. So we haven't implemented it as yet. So we are in the process of implementing it, because we need to train our officers and also do some sort of configuration in our system. So it's not rolled out yet, but it will do in the coming weeks.
Thank you. And does that also apply to the rollout of the enforcement of drop curbs and blocked cycle lanes?
Yeah, that's correct as well.
And do we have a, could we get an estimate of a time when that will be rolled out?
Yeah, I mean, we can update you in the briefings, but they're all not going to be rolled out at the same time. So the ones that are quite quick wins, like the observations, will be quite quick. They're quite easy to do, but the rest of it will take a bit of time, so we can give you a plan. Different activities will take a different timescale, depending on what the requirements are, what resources required.
Thank you very much. And in terms of Parking Services, they've got a number of e-bikes available, but my understanding is they're not in use. Are there any plans to use these to enforce the Sheep Valley Cycle Route, for example, which is frequently obstructed by cars?
Yeah, that is one of our objectives this year, to bring them back, because the people that were trained have left and everything else. So one of our managers is working on that, so we're hoping to get them back out. But I can share further details once we've agreed when that will be.
Thank you very much. Another thing that constituents or residents have contacted me about is about increased enforcement on match days. And is there any, could we, can we consider increasing enforcement on match days?
Alexi, I'd rather not extend the meeting just for general discussion on parking. That is a question you raise regularly in briefing, so I mean, I'm happy for that. Is that the last one?
There was another, just one question about government proposals for charges. I was told by a colleague that the government was going to do a white paper about parking charges, but I'm not sure if that's correct.
Is that, do you have any insight on that?
All right, we are, no.
No, okay, good. Thank you. I'm not seeing any other hands. I would like, oh, I'm seeing another hand. I would obviously echo Alexi's comments of gratitude to the CEOs. Do please pass, I think from the whole committee, if that's agreed, we can pass on the call. I just put my gratitude in the forward as well.
I was just going to say that in Aberystwyth, where they dispensed with the services of their traffic wardens for a year, the town absolutely descended into chaos. And people did realise why they are such a valuable part of the service provided by the council.
There we go. Thin blue line between anarchy and chaos. No, that's not right, is it? Marouf?
Thank you, Chair. Just two questions from me. The first one is just related to something you said earlier on about compliance. Do you feel complaints can be achieved with such low parking fines? And are there any considerations to increase this at this current time?
I think it depends which area and which restrictions you're referring to. We do listen to complaints and we try to improve on that all the time. There's different complaints in different areas, and that's why we created the web form this year, you know, where the people can actually report, you know, for their specific areas. We're always trying to make some improvements all the time, so we do listen wherever there are. I think what happens often is that when you do send the civil enforcement officers out, it'll get better. Soon as you move away from it, people's behaviours change again. So it's really, we do follow through where we can all the time.
Thank you. I'm not sure my question was answered, but I'm going to leave that for the time being. I, my second question was around something that was actually in the report. And it's interesting to see that much of the Chair's inbox is related to parking, blocking pavements, cycleways, bus lanes, parking near schools, but specifically damaging verges. Now, I note in Sheffield, we have a policy around verge parking, if you park on grass verges, we are perfectly fine with that unless there is a sign on that particular grass verge. Are you able to currently identify how many grass verges limit parking in the city at all? And is there any plans in play, or are there any plans in place in the current, in the coming months to have a blanket wide ban on parking on grass verges?
No, not far as I know there is, not a blanket one. And I can't tell you how many there are either.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, if there are no further questions, I propose we accept this report. Note the contents report and proof of publication, I think, subject to the errors that have been raised and a check through for any other errors. Subject to that, are we happy to agree to approve this report? Take that as agreed. Thank you, and that concludes the meeting. We are two minutes within our extended time limit.